All right, I'll do it again. I'd like to call the order, the meeting of the King George County School Board Work Session, if you'd stand. We're gonna have an invocation led by Micah Moore from Pioneer, excuse me, Tabernacle Baptist Church. Sorry.
All right, let's pray. Lord, we're grateful. We're grateful for good government. We're grateful for government that you've blessed us with. Lord, as we think of all these leaders here in front of us tonight, as they make decisions, as they advise us and carry out government function, Lord, we just pray for their wisdom. I'll pray for their skill, for their knowledge, and as they carry out these things, that you would just bless them with a special blessing tonight. Lord, we thank you for it. We thank you for their dedication to King George County and the school program here in the county. And, Lord, we think of their time away from family. Lord, they've taken away time from other things to set aside to come here tonight. We're grateful for that, as citizens. And, Lord, just, we pray you bless them for that, and their families as well. Again, Lord, we ask for their blessing, for wisdom, for knowledge, for skill, and, Lord, help them as they make decisions. Pray you bless them and their families tonight again. And we're grateful in your name, and we ask all these things. Amen and amen. God bless you guys.
Stand standing for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you, Micah. You can stay if you want, or go, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
All right, officially, do we have any comments, Dr. Boyd?
No, Mr. Chair.
We will go on for the discussion items, and the first one we have on the list is you put cellphone policy, but I think we should talk about the budget first, so then we're open, we can go to the end with the cellphone policy. Is that all right?
That's fine with me.
All right. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Boyd, if that's all right with everybody. It's listed slightly different in our agenda, but I'm afraid the cellphone policy might get rather long.
Yeah.
This is something we need to...
And this will be relatively quick. So, again, we did have the second item on here is budget update. Excuse me. Over the weekend, I think you guys may have seen or seen, saw the Freelance Star, that the House and the Senate came together through conference and agreed on some budget recommendations that now will go back before the governor. The governor has until, I believe, April 17th to veto, to modify, to change anything. But I would say, if you look at these key budget policy choices, this was a similar document that I gave you guys last time. I think it's on the third or fourth page. One that's going to probably affect us the most is the state-approved compensation for teachers. So if you remember, our current operating budget request had a 1% salary increase based on the governor's proposed budget. The current budget that came out of conference has a 3% salary increase for state-supported SOQ positions. So, again, I think what's important to know, and this is where we get this time of year, is when the General Assembly agrees on a compensation increase, it's really calculus into how they determine how much money that is afforded to each locality based on that. So if you read in this document, you'll see that it says a 3% salary increase. What that means in detail is that that's a 3% salary increase for all SOQ positions. SOQ is a document that the state issues. It's the standards of quality, and basically, it's a prescription, a very minimum prescription, one that most people believe is out of date, based on the J-LOCK study, on how many staff members a school has to have, based on the number of teachers they have. So, the General Assembly will provide that compensation increase for SOQ positions. Where this then leaves the locality is to make up that difference, and there is a match requirement. So what we'll probably look forward to in the next week is a Calc tool that shows us exactly how much state funding we'll receive from the state for that 3% compensation increase, and then we'll have a better idea of what the locality has to, has to put up to make that raise whole for our entire staff. Does that make sense? Any questions about that?
Exactly who comes into the SOQ? I mean, bus drivers?
Bus drivers do not. It's many, it's teaching positions, it's administrative positions. Many, many believe it should be bus drivers, but it is currently not. Counselors, social workers, all of those are in the SOQ document. Paraprofessionals. Any other questions about the compensation increase right now? Okay, so, I want to tie that back to our operating request budget. So, if you don't have your folder, that's fine. I'll hold it up like a good teacher and show you guys where we are. If you remember, and again, this is all tentative, because we're waiting for the Calc tool. The Calc tool, if you remember me, if I've said before, it's basically the tool that the state issues each locality that shows you exactly how much state funding you're gonna receive. So what I'm looking at right now, as you guys are turning pages, is the presentation, because I'd like you to take, I'd like to take you to about halfway through the presentation, our strategic plan goal number one. Looks like this. I think it's right after that page.
Make sure Mr. Monroe...
Yes, has a picture of Mr. Monroe. There you go.
Left hand.
Next page.
One more. There you go.
Okay, so, that salary increase is, is going to most likely affect or will affect these budget priorities. So, again, we're trying to figure out how much state funding we're gonna receive from this updated budget. The first two, if you remember, that are in bold, are in our current operating request based on the governor's request. So you remember, that number one was the 1% salary increase, which cost a million dollars total. The second, which is in the current operating budget request, is the standardizing and modernizing of our curricular and extracurricular stipends. So, again, coaches, grade-level chairs, NGROTC, all of the stipends we have, we wanted to update those and standardize them. Both of those are already in our budget request the first time around, when I made the initial presentation. The third one is incrementally adjusting the pay scale compression. I want to go over this again, because I think if we, if we end up with enough state funding, this may be the way that we want to address our pay scales. Many school divisions are doing it right now, and I'm gonna explain to you what happened and why. So, right now, Stafford, Caroline, King William, and I know ourselves, we have compression in our pay scales. And what that means is that our, our pay scales, for the most part, steps six through step 10 are compressed together. Because if you remember, way back in about 2008 to 2012, we went through an economic downturn, and all salary scales were frozen. So for four years in a row, our starting teacher, our starting teacher salary remained the same, and all we did was shift our pay scale up one, so no one got a raise. So, for four years in a row, I think the starting teacher salary at that time was maybe, this is a guess, I think it was somewhere in the ballpark of like $39,000 or $40,000 or something like that. So, in 2008, it stayed at $39,000. In 2009, it stayed at $39,000. And so, the first four steps of our, our pay scale were $39,000. Because of the way the pay scales have worked through the last, I guess, for almost on 10 years now, those compressed scales have worked their way through our pay scale. Okay? So they're in steps six through 10 right now. And what I mean by the, what I mean by compression is that every single one of our pace, every single one of our steps in our pay scale is an increase of 2%. So if you go from step 10 to step 11, your salary goes up by 2%. Right now, steps six through 10 only go up by .75%. And where it sits right now is a very pivotal point. Most people know that if you go into this field, and if you go into many fields, but if you go into education, it's proven by research that at about year five, year six, you're trying to figure out if you want to continue on this path, or if you want to go look for something else. It's really a bad time to have that type of compression in the pay scale. What it means is, over those four years, an individual's salary only increases by 3% for over four years, where outside of that compression, it increases 2% in one year.
You're saying, these are like sets of four?
Correct.
There's the first set of four back in 2008, and because we did that then, then when they went to step five, it was, or six, then, oh, five, really, then it, the next step, those four stayed the same, and then it stayed the same again. So you got sets of four going up instead of individual steps.
Correct.
It's one pay increase, and it stays for four steps.
Great.
You're good. We're going over budget stuff right now. So, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was thinking about this, and, you know, Mrs. Zierzierski gave us a good printout beginning of the year for the organizational meeting, showing how many teachers we had in each band, and so it's a remarkable decrease in the number of teachers we have from years one to four to the next step, like six to 10. So, I know the plan here was to expand it out, starting with year 10, but it would seem to me better if we could do it at year six, but we'd have to talk about how to do that, because, I mean, there's one way you could do it, where it would just cost a lot more, and we can't do that, right? But I, I would think might be best to, maybe we still do need some compression in the pay band, just practically speaking, but maybe we shift it upwards a little bit, because, just practically speaking, I, I think that when we get new teachers, they're probably, they're affecting the classrooms probably just going up exponentially, and they're, those first few years, as they're learning the job, they're getting better at it rapidly. And, not to knock anybody, but I think, anybody in any profession, eventually, you get better and better and better, and then at some point, you kind of maybe start to level off a little bit, start to plateau. So maybe our pay band could reflect that a little bit more, like where it's pay faster sooner, and maybe less later.
I think that's what he was talking about doing.
Yeah, and so, that's a good point, because that's exactly, that's exactly what Stafford's doing with theirs, is they've got kind of an exponential growth in their pay scale, and when you get to the top end of their pay scale, I think their increases are somewhere in the ballpark of like 9, 9.5% between steps, which is, is huge. The other point that I think we need to make is, to Mr. Rolls's point, it's a very pivotal time for teachers. Five, six years from year six to year 10, that's a sweet spot for, for somebody committing to this profession. The other thing personally, is that it's also the time, if you think about the age of teachers, it's also the time where they start to think about a family, it's also the time where they start to consider some pretty pivotal life shifts. So, it's very important that I think we, we work to alleviate our, our pay scale of that compression, if possible. To your first point, there's a couple different ways of doing it, but it's, it's expensive. The cheapest, cheapest option is addressing it one year at a time, and really, Stafford is, is in, I think, their third or fourth year of this, they're, they're addressing their compression, and really, you have to, over multiple years. They're working from the, from the high end down, like, like we proposed here, but just that step 10, to adjust that step 10 alone, and what that means is, we would take that step 10, which is currently at .75%, and raise it to two. What happens, though, is when you raise that step 10 to two, every salary after that increases, it has a compounding effect, kind of like a mortgage rate, you know? So it, it compounds after that. Now, to Matt, to Mr. Rolls's point, you can, you can certainly do that in step six, and then seven, then eight, then nine, and so on. The other thing you could possibly do is adjust all of those steps by a certain increment that we could afford. So if we don't just take step 10 and move it from .75 to two, maybe we take all of the steps and raise them by a quarter percent this year, and another quarter percent next year, and so on. So you can raise each step incrementally, that's a possibility. There's a couple options. Right now, we've, we've done the salaries scales for step 10, and we know that that's gonna be a cost of $1.3 million, just to adjust that step.
That step 10 will basically filter all the way down.
Correct. Yes.
From step 10, but 11 and up, it will, it won't filter, it will eventually start to go up, though.
Say that again?
Okay, what happens to steps 11 and on?
They all... They all increase.
I meant.
Yes.
Then they're gonna all increase, okay.
Yeah, they, they increase in, in compensation, they all stay the same in the, in the percentage. So they, they'll all, what we're, what we're hoping for is that we work our, our way back to 2% at minimum between each step.
That's your recommendation?
That is, that's my recommendation right now. I think there's a number of good reasons that you can start exploring why that's a good idea. I, I think any, any teacher that's with us and considers staying with us, from a professional standpoint, it's, it's, it's the right thing to do. From a personal standpoint, like I said before, it's, if you're in this profession for 10 years, you're at about 30, 31 years old, if you're coming out of college, 32 years old, that's when you're starting to think about some, some life-changing considerations. So I think, I think it would be the right thing to do.
That's what you put in the budget you gave us already.
Yes, so, again, if you take a look at that strategic plan goal number one, these first two are in the operating request based on the initial governor's budget. Now that we're going to have a new state budget, which looks like we're gonna have, don't quote me on this, but just trying to piece together some information, it might be as much as a million dollars more from the state coming to King George. Depending on how those numbers play out in the Calc tool, and the fact that we now are getting some additional money from the state for compensation, we need to see if we can attack goal number three, as far as adjusting the compensation and scale. And, and again, that's, that's...
And keep goals number one and two like they are.
Keep, keep goals number one and two like they are.
And adjust goal three for the, the compression...
Yes. So, again, depending on how much additional money we get from the state, and really, how much of that is tied to compensation, I would say we start considering objective number three, the compression in the scale. And then the other, the other two objectives here, just while we're on the, the topic, are relatively inexpensive. Number four talks about making sure that we recognize our, this, again, is, you know, our, our teachers that have continued their professional growth, and, and will, right, so, again, right now, if you have a master's degree in King George County, you get 7% added to your base salary annually. So if your base salary grows, it's a percentage, that 7% obviously grows. What we like to do is make sure that we have those same percentages, not amounts. The way it worked over the years is, if you have a bachelor's plus 15, I think you got something like $750. We want to turn that into a percentage. We're gonna leave the master's percentage at 7%, and then if you are not, not in a position that requires a doctorate, like a teaching position, then we would increase the percentage for a doctorate degree as well, for anybody that doesn't require a doctorate. If your position requires a doctorate, then that's part of the job. So, again, we estimate that to be 40, that, that would be a $41,000 cost. And then the final objective in strategic plan goal number one is what we had discussed pretty much at length, where we were gonna take that, the sick leave payout program, adjust that from 5,000 to 10,000, take that $20 a month that our, our teachers were receiving for not taking our health care, reapplying that to that program, and really making it more advantageous for them to hold on to their sick leave and turn that in upon retirement. And I can stop there, I threw a lot at you right there, but if, if the board is okay with taking that approach, then this following week, when we get the Calc tool and things of that nature, then we'll start revising the presentation so that we include these additional objectives.
We had a large discussion last time about...
Did you hear Max off, I think? Is it? Oh, it's on, okay.
Should sit closer to my phone. You know, in the health insurance situation, about the percentage of increase of how much we were gonna cover, that was a large percentage. And so, just what are the recent thoughts about? In other words, the 11% that, that it went up as compared to the percentage that would be shared, wouldn't be shared, and that was quite a large discussion that we had.
Yes, so...
Do you want to speak to that?
I certainly can.
Well, can we, I have more on this, can we...
Okay. Yeah.
Go ahead.
So, just refresh your memories, for, for number two, as far as the stipends, was that roughly a 20% increase, or how much of an increase?
I think that was a roughly a 20% increase, and then what we also did was, we standardized them, so that, over many, many years, there were a lot of differences between schools. Some of them had stipends for positions that weren't at other schools, so we made sure that we were fair and consistent from school to school, you know, elementary school, the secondary school is a little different, because there's just additional responsibilities. But we tried to standard those, standardize those as best we can, and then increase them by 20%, I think was the number. And, again, I mean, that's, that's been over, how long, Mr. Frank? 20, 25 years? Yeah.
That, that has to change. They're ridiculous, the stipends, sorry.
Yeah, no, they are. And, again, what, what, I think what's important to know is that this amount of money is not gonna be...
Not that much.
It, it's, it's not that big of a difference. The amount of time that a coach puts in, or a sponsor puts in, it's pennies on the dollar compared to what this means, but I, I think it goes a long way in showing our staff that we appreciate the extra effort. Right now, we live in a different environment than, than we probably did 20 years ago. There used to be a, a line at the bottom of my contract when I first started teaching, probably yours as well, it was all other stu, all other duties as assigned, and, and you just, you did what you had to do to get it done, right? This generation's a little different, and, and, and we're having a more difficult time trying to find folks to fill those very vital roles when it comes to extracurricular activities, curricular activities, and, and I think, in speaking with our staff, this will go a long ways in showing that, that level of appreciation.
Do you have anything?
At 10, because you're catching those teachers coming out of that compression, keeping them.
Good.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, I just ask, oh, like I said, there's that big step, like the one to four, and then like five to nine years, there's a big step down on the teacher, so...
And then the step 10, or 11 is still low. Would you say it was .75?
No, it's .2, everything above 10.
Yes, everything above 10's two, right now. So for the most part, everything above 10 is 2%.
Okay.
And when I hesitate a little bit, because it, when it, when it, when you work it out, sometimes it's like 2.01% because of its, its cents on the dollar, but for the most part, they're all 2%, all the way down from 11 on, six through 10 right now. And, again, I'm talking about the teacher scale, some of this compression exists in different places, in different scales, like the para-scale, for, for example, but for the most part, it's all because of those four years of, of the freeze in, in the schedule and the economic downturn, around 2008 to 2012.
So, I mean, how to get rid of all the compression would be ideal, as far as retaining teachers, but, like I said, I'm pointing out that, that big step between years one to four, then right after that, so, I think it'd be beneficial if we could work out an option to start at year six. I mean, have we calculated numbers for any other options, as far as ways to approach the compression?
Instead of year 10, start at year six, is that what you're saying, Mr. Rolls?
Right, and, I mean, if that's, yeah, that would, if you just straight made year six 2%, that'd be more expensive than making year 10 2%, but maybe, but then, everybody above year six would get a 2% raise, plus whatever their, you know, step was. So, I mean, one way to sort of balance that out is, perhaps you could shift the compression up a year, if you needed to, if we couldn't afford, just doing straight up 2%.
A bad idea.
Yeah. The only problem with that, though, is that anybody right now that's on that, that's getting ready to come out of it, we're, we're holding a minute. I like the idea of the, we can, we can do an option to see what it would cost if we did it at six, and then, you know, made six 2%, and then, that would leave three steps that would still be at .75%. It would be more expensive, because as Mr. Rolls has pointed out, that beautiful table that Ms. Zierzierski gave us over the last couple days, shows us how many teachers we have at each one of those bands. So, obviously, the earlier on we go into the pay scale, the more costly that, that effort will be, but we can take a look at it.
But, yeah, actually, like, no way to balance it out is also look at, if you just shifted the compression up a year, because then, if you got a teacher who's at step 10, even if it didn't get, even if we didn't give a step increase for the year, they'd still get a 2%, well, no, I'm sorry, it's gone from .75 to 2% for step six, so they would still get that extra 1.25% raise, even staying at step 10, but then, going to, to step 11, if the pressure slid up, then they, you know, they'd get another, another .75%, so they would still get a 2% raise going into the next year, which, you know, they would've gotten anyways.
Right, so the effort there is just to affect less individuals by shifting...
One is just if we, because I don't know, we said how much more expensive doing just the increase of step six is gonna be, and if it becomes prohibitively expensive, just shifting the compression up a year might make it more affordable, but still help everybody above step six.
My concern would, if I'm hearing this right, would be the year eight and nine, teachers getting pretty upset that they've pushed through those years, and now it's going back behind them again.
Yeah, it's gonna, it, it, that, that's a fact. It's, in order for us, in fact, we've got, probably most of the teachers that are above that have lived through this, you know, they, and...
Then they see the reward going behind them.
They, they do, well...
Well, no, but they, everyone above step six gets, would, gets more pay if we increase step six.
Now they do, and now there's, there's a certain number of years where they didn't appreciate that additional compensation, probably all the way back to like 2012 to now. But, to Mr. Rolls's point, everybody will get that, everybody above the step that we adjust will get an increase, will get a, a pretty good increase.
Yeah, Mr. Rolls's point, if you don't mind, next time, when you present on the 26th for a final approval, is maybe just look at that again, and see how much difference, how much money we're talking about.
What made you choose 10 over six?
Okay, and I, I'll take a look to at, the other important factor is the amount of money that the state's gonna give us for the 3% compensation increase.
Right.
And, and, you know, whether or not this falls in line with that, because of, again, we, we have to turn to our board of supervisors now, who's, you know, having a difficult time trying to figure out how to save money, spend money, and so on. And, and really, as I've told you guys before, many of our experienced board supervisors know this, that when, when the state passes this budget for this salary and for this compensation increase, it really saddles our local legislators with, with an additional cost.
To match someone.
That they have to match. So, you know, we need to figure out exactly what that cost is, and then know what we have to work with as far as the amount of money that would need to be contributed to the salary increases.
No matter how that 3% is gonna be used, allowing it to be used, hopefully, the way we're hoping it will be allowed, I mean, the, the board of supervisors is gonna have to match it, no matter what, I mean, we're not gonna not do it.
Right.
Just be throwing money away.
Correct. Yeah, if we don't match what the state says we have to match, then we don't, then we don't receive those funds.
May be tough on the board of supervisors, but the reality is, they need, I don't think they're gonna allow that money to go away, so, it's just a matter of convincing them the need and what we're doing.
Okay.
So, I was just saying, so what about the percentage increase for the insurance? I know that was on one of these other pages, what, what are you thinking about that?
Yeah, so, again, if, if, to, to refresh everyone's memory, we, we started off this year with the real thought that our, that our health care could go up pretty substantially. If you remember when Mark III came to present, we have some pretty substantial claims right now, and we were estimating costs that could increase by up to 28%. We then estimated in our presentation, and, again, that's a little further back in, in one of the tables, a 20% increase, so I'm looking now at the page that says major differences between FY '24 versus FY '25, and, I don't have the updated numbers, let me just pull that real quick.
It ended up 11, of course.
It ended, ended up 11%. So, what does that mean in terms of dollars and cents? Right now, our health care, from, from this year to next, FY '24 to FY '25 will increase by 11%. The cost of that 11% adjustment...
Does everybody still have, you have it on here?
Okay.
Everybody has their...
by 11%. The cost of that 11% adjustment.
Does everybody still have, you have it on here?
Okay.
Everybody has their.
I don't, I don't have that right in front of me either. Yeah. Overachiever, no.
I just stuck it all in the same folder, right?
So the, the total cost, according to our calculations for the 11% is $618,557. This is down from $857,000, which was in our initial budget request. So that's, that's a savings in itself. What we talked about last time was one of two options, either the board picking up the 11% or the board sharing the cost with the employee with the same cost breakdown, the, the same sharing that we, that we do in our current healthcare program, which is on that, I think 11 by 17 sheet that many of you guys have in front of you there. So again, you know, this is a work session. We're not here to make any motions or, or discuss making a motion, but it would be beneficial to, to kind of get an idea of where we want to go with this. There's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes as far as updating the budget request and bringing to you at our next board meeting, which is on the 25th, I think, a pretty polished budget so that we can approve it on the 25th before I go to the board of supervisors on the 27th right now. So a, a, any additional feelings or thoughts about that renewal rate of 11% and how we would like to handle that increase?
Yeah.
Mr. Rolls?
Yeah, I'd hope to talk to board members between then and now, but we haven't had a chance yet. But still, I think, like I said, I want, I'd like to rebalance that. I think it'd be more efficient to have it not quite so heavily subsidized. At the same time, I think the best way to make the transition is to still ask for the board supervisors to cover, give us the same amount of money as if they're recovering the entire increase, but reallocate it. Like I say, where we would cover a smaller percentage of, a small percentage of the increase, but then take the money that we're saving by covering a smaller percentage increase and redistribute it somehow to the employees. So in terms of the, the budget requests, but I guess we still have to propose or finalize the tables next time. But in terms of the budget request, I still would ask for the full amount as if we were covering it. But as far as approving something for the insurance companies, like I said, I would like to change the cost share to make it less heavily subsidized.
So I'm, I don't know if I understand you. So you're saying that you would agree as far as the budget request to, we'd pay the 11%, but then how we would do that would be?
We still request the same amount of money as if we were doing that. But I mean, it's what I explained last time.
So I, I think what Mr. Rolls is saying is that, that the cost is going to be $618,000. And correct me if I'm wrong, you're saying ask for $618,000 from the board of supervisors, but do not contribute the full amount to employees' healthcare, spend it in another way.
Right, like where we would, instead of fully covering the, the increase, we would, but I guess one time, last time I suggested that we cover 25% of the increase and employees cover 75% increase so that it adjusts the cost shares down, we're not paying so much more to the employees. And, yeah, I mean, we talked about this at length last time. So I am prepared to discuss it a different way. I was mostly focused on the cell phone work session, so.
I just, listening to a lot of teachers, and then again, I mentioned before that my experience in being involved with this before in a lot of schools is that insurance is right up there, pretty close to salaries. And I think in a, in a psychological way, if we were to pay that full 11% for the, each employee, that actually in some ways has as much or more value than giving them an increase in salary. And yet it would cost significantly, I think, less money than if we were to increase the salaries, salaries, say by another one or two or 3%. We paid for that, that communicates more or just as much, but costs less. It's a psychological thing. That's, that's my point. So I would, I like it to see us just simply to cover that full 11%. And I understand what you're saying, there's a way to do that, but then we would spend the money differently. Saying the way they would receive it, if we were to give the full 11% of an increase, to me, that has value of saying it's almost like they got a increase in their salary. Well, they did indirectly, but.
Yeah.
It's a tremendous amount. And we even heard that, I have this past couple of weeks, they sent them to all of us, several teachers, kind of were saying the same thing.
I, I agree with the full 11% and we pay that. I've had conversations with several teachers and only half of our teachers get this insurance anyway, and those are the ones that really need it. So we've got single parents out there that are really scratching and they need this insurance. And I think we should pay the whole 11%.
I know we're not voting on anything here. This is just, you know, we're telling you, Dr. Boyd.
It's helpful though for me to get a general consensus so that we know how to craft the budget request that you guys will approve on the 25th.
How does Kathy and Colleen, how do you guys feel?
I was leaning towards only paying a percentage of it, but then after discussions and actually doing some of the number crunching and seeing, you know, actually teachers reach out and, you know, give great detail about that, I think that it's important that we cover it. And again, like Mr. Frank said, it's 50% of our employees and I, I think that we should just pay the, the full percentage.
Colleen, how do you feel?
I can appreciate how Matt is trying to be careful with the budget because you already said we're going to have to give them a raise because we're not going to throw away that money. So they're going to get 11% increase. No, they're going to get 11% increase in their healthcare costs and we'll cover that. And then we're going to have to give them the 3%, which they deserve, I'm not saying anything like that. We just, I think we got to kind of figure out where that's going to come from. I know you're already working on that. I'm for the healthcare being covered because like Ed said it pretty clear, it's, it's necessary, the 50% that are on it need it. I just hope, because we got a lot of emails about teachers starting, basically saying they're going to quit if, if we, we don't cover it. And I, I just hope they see that and yes.
Absolutely. I understand.
Here is the other, the surrounding divisions. Do we know how the percent, did you discuss that last time? I can't remember.
Oh, yeah.
Percentage, the other divisions around cover ours healthcare and what they're going to cover this year?
Well, I know, I've got a spreadsheet of what their healthcare is going to go up by. I don't have, I don't know exactly what their current cost structure is. Is that what you're asking?
And then also, if you heard from other superintendents, this is something that I'm sure is discussed every year, kind of what the general feeling is with some of the surrounding communities as far as compensating the teachers for the increase in healthcare.
Sure. I, I mean, I think right now in, in the environment that we're in, where we're talking about this, this, let me back up. The push from the general assembly for these compensation increases of 3%, we're going on about, well, we're going on a very long spell. Virginia, right now, as far as teacher compensation, is well below the national average. However, we're one of the top 10 states as far as educational outcomes. So if you look at the average teacher salary, ours is well below the national average. We also live in a state where there, there's plenty of government jobs, there's, there's, there's a lot of affluence in the state of, of Virginia, which drive costs up for everything else. So we've got a profession that's earning well below the national average in a state that has elevated costs because of the level of professionals we have in it. So our teachers are, as you referenced in many of the emails, struggling to put food on the table. So I think anything that we can possibly do coming from me and my position of, of looking at it from a professional standpoint, if you want a quality educator in the classroom, relieve them of a lot of the things that they have to worry about, like putting food on the table or working a second job or doing things that, that draw their attention away from the job that we want them to focus on. So I think anything that we can do that would alleviate their concerns when it comes to just basic living needs, then we get a better educator out of that.
What is the national average? Teacher pay, what's the national average?
Oh, I don't know what it is off the top of my head right now. But I can tell you that this, this narrative has been going on for about 10 years. And so, well, longer than that, but what I'm saying is going on about 10 years is there's been a push to increase teacher salaries, which if you're, two years ago, we were at, we had a 5% increase, then a 7% increase. So you can see the general assembly, even based off of the governor's proposed budget of 1% is saying, no, we need to continue to climb and meet the national average. There's been some bills in the general assembly that says we'll have 5% increases until we reach the national average. In the next two years of the biennium, if this budget passes right now, there's 3% raises in, in this year and next year. And they're saying that's working us towards getting to the national average, but we're still, we're still boat beneath it. And I don't know what that exact number is off the top of my head right now, but we're not there.
Of course, you know, Google, but it just says here that for first year teachers in Virginia, national average for first year public school teachers is 53,964. That's Virginia. Vermont is 53,737, Maryland 53,47, and Nebraska's 51,897.
So our starting salary is 50,000.
Low all those.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, we have a hard stop of 6:30 today, right? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Is, is there anything more yet? Because Mr. Rolls is right, we do need to get to the cell phone. Is there anything more that you wanted to say, Dr. Boyd?
No, sir. I, I appreciate everybody's comments on the, on the healthcare discussion. We probably will, and again, it's going to depend on how quickly information comes out from the state. All of this right now that we're playing with, that superintendents are talking about, that school boards are delivering, deliberating over is this level of detail. And, and we need detail that's much deeper than that, which comes from the calc tool. So as soon as that information becomes available, then it's, it's likely that we're going to, and, and hopefully we, you know, we don't have to make decisions based on this. We can if we need to, but hopefully we don't have to. We will, um, we may need to have another meeting prior to the 25th unless you guys are, are comfortable passing that budget on 25th. But I think setting down before then might not be a bad idea based on the new numbers we receive. That's certainly, you know, that's at the will of the board.
The key would be once that calc tool comes out, then I'll, we'll email all of you.
Once that calc tool comes out or we get enough, you know, information that we can make a qualified determination on, especially the, the, the compensation increase, 80% of our operating budgets staff. So that number outside of any of these other changes that came out of the general assembly is going to be very impactful to our local budget.
Is it, are you suggesting we may even schedule something now and look at our calendars, Dr. Boyd?
If, if you guys want to go that far, I can certainly make myself.
So we can't make a decision on this. Well.
Mr. Chair.
Schedule a meeting.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I, to me, the real deliberation for us, say how we're going to spend money happens after the board supervisors tells us how much we have. That's when we can like prioritize. So I don't know. Yeah, we're going to ask for what we're going to ask for, and then they're going to give us what they're going to give us. So I don't know how important it is.
Yeah, but until we get that calculation tool, I think we're not going to really see what it is we're going to end up asking for. Does that make any sense?
Because you're going to prioritize what, yeah.
Yeah, but you're right. We could just simply wait because we're going to present it to the board of supervisors and then we may have to come back and make adjustments. You're absolutely right.
And he's right, but you're right. It's just going to mean that, whatever I finally present on the 25th and however accurate I can be, we're pretty much, at that point, we have to approve our budget that evening. But to Mr. Rolls's point, I then go turn around and present that budget to the board of supervisors. You guys have a general idea of, of what we currently have and where we will go depending on state funds. If we approve our budget on the 25th, I go to the board of supervisors on the 27th and then as Mr. Rolls pointed out, we'll, we'll begin to work with the board of supervisors on deliberating. So we could get away without a meeting if, if you guys are comfortable with, with what I've discussed as far as where we are and where we intend to go with additional state funds.
What I see is if we were to have another, I want to hear the will of the board in a minute, of course, we can't vote on anything, but if we were to have another meeting, it would probably shorten the meeting on the 26th.
25th.
25th, sorry. If we were to have, once we got the calc tool and now we can literally say this is what we're going to be presenting, we could actually have a short meeting and only talk about that one thing, not have anything else on the budget. And then the meeting on the 26th would be simply the final approval.
What's the 26th?
On 25th.
I keep saying 20.
Yeah.
25th, my fault. So what's the will of the board? What do you want to do?
Let me make sure I'm on the same sheet of music here. You're going to bring us a 6% compression rate at step six compression rate, right?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm going to do it a couple of different ways. I'll do a six and see what that costs. I'll do it, we know what the 10 cost already. I think that's it. I, I'll do those two options.
And the 11%.
And then the other option we'll do is the 11%, I'll, I'll, based on, but before I go to that, the other option I want to do is 3% across the board so that I know what what, what the board supervisors is straddled with. And so again, I don't want to present an option with this compression that's going to be so much more expensive than what that 3% increase would be.
Right.
Make sense? So yes, I, that's, that's what I'll do. And I, I'm indifferent if, if, if you guys want to, and, and we can hold right now and see if we even get the calc tool. We, we've been saying for, I've been hearing for a couple of weeks now, calc tool's coming, calc tool's coming, and we don't really have it yet. So we don't have to make a decision tonight. We, we could, but we don't have to. We really don't have to.
All right, what's the will of the board?
What, do you think that the sixth step is going to be much more expensive than the 10 step?
It's going to be more.
The 3%?
Uh, it, it'll be, it, it'll, yes, I think it'll be much more expensive.
Like much more?
Like. Oh, I, it's so hard to tell.
A mill.
I don't know. Because what it does is it increases the salaries, salaries for everyone.
In those steps.
From step six to step 35. Now, Ms. Yazursky gave us a table, let me just, let me reference this table really quick. I know we've got to move on a little bit.
I'll say right now, I bet it's going to be, when we're trying to balance anything else, it's going to be too expensive. That's why I said also put in the option of just sliding the scales up, just to look at that. It'll be more expensive, but maybe not quite as, not so much so.
So Beth gave us this data point paper, this, you guys, I don't know if you saw that. And to give you a decent number, right now. Okay, so it would involve, if we did step six, this is for teachers only, instead of step 10, you have a copy of it? You're talking about an additional 172 employees. Yes, I think that's right. So what I'm looking at, if, okay, I'm looking at the table in the top right-hand corner. You see where it says years of experience in King George? On the far, on the left-hand side of that column, you've got number of years of experience. You've got one through four, five through nine. And then if you look all the way over to the right-hand side of that table, you have the number of employees associated with that experience band. So there's 279 employees that have worked one through four years with us. If we chose to do step six instead of step 10, what I'm saying is that that would, that would be for that, it, it would be 172 teachers additional that would be calculated into that increase.
I saw the rest, right?
Almost, because it's five through nine.
Well, except for that 279.
But do some deny.
Right, so like 400 and something.
Not really, because we're talking about six and there's five, step five there.
Yeah, so it could be.
On step five.
Yeah, so, yeah, minus whoever's in step five. So, and, and again, it's, it's all dependent upon, that's only part of the conversation. It's also the, you know, how much each of those salaries increase based on what step they're on, depending on how many are at step six, how many are at step seven. But all of that's, we can, we can crunch those numbers and, and give that option and see how much more expensive that, that option may be.
As far as another meeting, what's the will of the board? Wait till the 25th?
I'd like to wait.
Wait, all right. Wait, all right. All right, I'll be emailing you. Dr. Boyd will be emailing us to see. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to wait until the 22nd, or 21st to 22nd. And if you get the stuff from the state, then, then we could, the Comp tool, then we could have the meeting either 21st or 22nd.
Let's do this. The moment he gets the Calc tool, I'll, I'll email, we'll email, he'll email all of us, and then you chime in.
But I'm just saying, right now, on our schedules, we can say 21st to 22nd. If the Comp tool comes in, we may have a meeting.
What if it doesn't come in?
Then we won't.
If it doesn't come in, we're gonna make our best estimated guess and speak with a lot of other superintendents, try to figure out what everyone else is doing. Because ultimately, I, I think regardless of whether or not we have a Calc tool, based on the current information they're providing, and part of this has to do with the new leadership at the Department of Education. We used to get a Calc tool. If you remember last year, if we, if you did this with us last year, we got a Calc tool for every single budget that came out. And we're not getting that this year. So regardless, on the 25th, we have to, the school board has to pass, you have to give me my marching orders, we have to pass a budget so that I can take that to the board of supervisors and present our approved budget to the board of supervisors. And then, as Mr. Rolls pointed out, what happens from there is I give this, the same presentation that we've approved to the board of supervisors. They may have a few questions that evening, but usually, that starts the deliberation between the school board and the board of supervisors, and we start talking about the directions we all want to go in.
I'm a little early, Mr. Frank. I mean, I cannot meet on the 21st, but 22nd I could. But let's just wait.
Let's wait and see what.
Yeah, the reason I'm saying that is because we may even be able to meet like the, you know, the 19th or whatever, you know. So let's, what I'll do is when we get the Calc tool, once we get that, I'll sit there and I'll put at least, we'll put a calendar out there for all of you guys. I'll put my dates and I'm available, and then you guys add yours. We'll see if we can come up with a date that's coming if we need to meet.
We need that 1730 on the 27th.
I was originally gonna be gone all next week. That may.
At 5:30.
It does. You're right.
All right. And I should say, as you're writing down the, the time and date of that meeting.
Which, which meeting?
This, Mr. Frank is talking about the, my presentation to the board of supervisors. That's a tentative date. They've slowed down a little bit on budget deliberations, and they're trying to work through some other things here on the county level. As long as that, I'll make sure I keep you guys informed on, on whether or not that holds true.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. And I know there's a lot there, and there's still several things in the, up in the air. Let's go ahead and go to the cell phone discussion. We've got about, what time do you have to leave, Dr. Boyd?
I don't have to leave, but they moved this, the, the, yeah. Yeah, we have to leave.
We have to leave. What time is that? 6:30?
I think so, yeah.
Till they come in.
Well, I, yeah, I don't even know if they're coming.
We got about an hour and 20 minutes.
I think we've got plenty of time.
All right. Dr. Boyd, let us know with the committee.
Okay. All right. So let's switch pages to talk about cell phone use in schools. So let's see. All of you guys have in front of you an orange folder. Everything in that orange folder has to do with the conversations we had with the cell phone committee. We had three, I thought, very good meetings. It was probably one of the best committees that I've been on. Very diverse viewpoints, folks that were coming from a lot of different stakeholder groups. We had teachers represented at all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. We had parents represented at all three levels. We had student representatives at the high school. We had administrators at all, all levels. So I thought it was pretty good as far as getting a really wide appreciation for the different stakeholders as it pertains to a cell phone. The first meeting, that's gonna be the one with this clip on it. This, this, let me call this thing. What is this thing?
Paperclip.
Paperclip? Binder clip. Okay. All right. So this was on February 21st. What we did in this meeting is we just, we introduced everyone. We made sure we knew that we had individuals from all different stakeholder groups. And I'm a firm believer in not knowing, you know, not, not planning on going somewhere different until we know where we currently are. So in other words, taking an appreciation for what our current situation is before we talk about changing it or going into a different direction. So really, this first meeting was building the foundation of cell phone policy in King George County, where it's been, where it's going, before we talked about any of the considerations moving forward. So we looked at our current practice. Our current practice, you'll see there, from every single principal, starting with the high school, Mr. Watson, and then the middle school, Dr. Nice, and then you have the three elementary school principals, Mr. Monroe, Dr. Brown, and Ms. Eli. And they all gave me just a quick synopsis of generally what the cell phone practices are in their building right now. So generally speaking, on the high school level, they can use them in the hallways, they can use them in the cafeteria. And they really give the teachers right now autonomy to make a decision on how they want to apply any practices in the classroom. At one time, and I think it's still the case, they still use the, the traffic light. Is, is that still there? Okay. So at one time, what we had to kind of simplify this practice at the high school was there was a, a traffic light with a green, yellow, and red light on it. Green meant it was open cell phone use in the classroom. Teachers could say, hey, it's, you know, green time, or however they referred to it. Yellow meant that the cell phone could be used for instructional purposes, and red meant that cell phone use was prohibited. That was a policy that was our practice that was controlled by the teacher in the classroom. Every teacher had different expectations in every classroom. Okay? Any questions about that practice at the high school? I can just work through this rather quickly. Okay. At the middle school, a little more restrictive?
I'll both jump in. So I do wonder, though, do some teachers and/or students find it hard that there's different rules in different classrooms? Like where, because if you're one of the tougher teachers, then maybe you really have a much harder time with kids saying, yeah, but.
Yes, the short answer, yes.
Does this, and then, yeah, just.
Yeah, and I think students have a challenging time with that, for the most part, especially, you know, like special education students and things that, where they're trying to pick up on environmental cues and appreciate expectations in the building. Different, different expectations in different classrooms make it challenging. I can tell you, too, one of the things that came out of the committee was, a teacher spoke up and said, you know, it's difficult for teachers, because if they want to be more restrictive in a cell phone policy, and they, and that child just came from a class that had a less restrictive policy, then it gets to be a challenging proposition. So moving to the middle school, the middle school is a little more restrictive. Right now, the policy at the middle school is that they can use them in the lunchroom and in the hallways, but in the classrooms, they are prohibited across the school. And they're supposed to be out of sight, powered off at the middle school right now. All three of the elementary school principals said basically, not a real issue here. We have a few cell phone issues a couple times a year, maybe, but for the most part, not a real big issue at the elementary level. So that's current practice. Again, this whole entire first meeting was just setting the stage. So if you turn over, what you'll see is we also looked at our former policy, JFCK. That was the one that we got rid of, because it was just entirely inaccurate. We also looked at the current code of conduct pertaining to cell phones, which, again, will be a, and a document that will need to be updated depending on what direction we go in. And then what you'll see there for the remaining part of this packet is, as soon as we began having conversations about cell phone considerations in school, we opened up the Ask the Superintendent link on the webpage for any cell phone comments from any stakeholder in our community, parents, students, teachers, all of the above. And what you have there before you is all of the comments we received, all of the comments I received, based on cell phones in our schools right now. And you can see, quite a few people weighed in on it. I think there's over, over maybe 50, at least 50 or so comments. And I want to say, if you, you know, you may want to go back and read those at some point, but I can tell you, generally speaking, about 28 of these 50 comments ask that the school come up with a more restrictive cell phone policy. So the majority of these comments were, many parents, many students, many teachers saying, hey, we understand that there's a, there's difficulty here with cell phones. We would appreciate a more restrictive policy. Another important piece of qualitative data that we pulled out of this, this number of entries, was that about 13 comments from parents had to do with a relatively perceived sense of safety if their child had a cell phone. So that's something that we considered important as well. Working through, you'll, you'll again see JFCK. That's our, the former cell phone policy that we had. Remember last year on May 8th, we rescinded that policy and removed it from our policy manual? Because again, it had things in there that were outdated. It hadn't been touched since 2010, and technology since 2010 had changed substantially. And I think we removed it because we knew we were gonna end up here at some point, talking about how we could revise it. The remaining parts of that packet were to take a look at the information in our student code of conduct that referenced cell phones. And anywhere you see kind of that, that bracket on the left-hand side, you can see that it has to do with cell phones in our student code of conduct. And then finally, at that meeting, before we did an activity, and I'll explain what that activity was, I gave them copies of all of the, many of the articles that we had, that we as a board have been reading, and some of them that are pretty available and prevalent online. And then that evening, the last thing we did, and you can see the notes in the, in the beginning of the second packet, is we started to frame the conversation, because I think I might have told you guys, I, when I was principal at Rappahannock High School, we, we started taking a look at revising our cell phone policy. And at that time, what was surprising to me was that I thought it was gonna be students that were the biggest pushback, but, but it was actually parents that, that were the biggest pushback when it came to revising the cell phone policy. So what we did at this meeting is, we put up white poster board around the library, and we first asked everybody on the committee to brainstorm who the stakeholders were. Who direct, who is gonna be directly involved in this policy change? So what you see here in these tables is the individuals that the committee believed would be directly affected by a change in our cell phone policy. So we came up with teachers, school staff, parents, administration. Yes, sir?
Just, we're going through real fast. So I just want to go back. You were talking about the old cell phone policy.
Yes, sir.
We asked a question about that. So, I mean, I haven't gone through in terrible detail, but I mean, basically, it was phones stay off, and they stay in your locker. Like we don't see them. So, I mean, that's pretty straightforward. So what was this? So we can make any policy we want, but if we have a policy that says they're off in lockers and they aren't used, but then nobody follows it, I mean, that's a problem. So.
Well, I think this went into a little more, it wasn't just that. It was.
More words, but.
Yeah, it goes into a little more detail. This, so it first says students may not possess the devices. It then goes on later on and says that they can possess beeper cell phones, PDAs.
At the elementary school level.
One of those. And then that the device must remain off and out of sight during instructional time. Later on, it said something, you're right, to the effect of it being in a locker. But then it also said, you know, when and where it could be used, which was, I think there was some after-school activities or something like that was on there. Buses were on there. But more importantly, your question is, is that if, if that's the policy, what can?
I mean, what were the problems with enforcing the policy? And I guess that's something we have to discuss. For any policy we make is, I mean, what's gonna be different for any new policy we make as far as it being enforced?
That, that's the challenge. So when we spoke to, and I think many of you guys spoke to as well, many other schools, and, you know, jumping ahead, one of the things that we did is we took a look at cell phone policies across the state. So we looked at Bristol Way Out in Southwest Virginia. We looked at Fairfax County. We looked at Prince William County. We looked at Virginia Beach, Norfolk Public Schools, Charlottesville Public Schools. We looked at all of their cell phone policies. All of them are in a different place than we are right now. Some probably more advanced and more restrictive, some less restrictive. When you speak to the principals, and when you speak to the superintendents in these areas, what you just asked is exactly what the challenge is. And it's exactly why I think making sure that we understand stakeholder concerns, we understand who our stakeholders are, and then once we establish what we want to do, buy-in is 100% key. Because if we come up with this great idea or great policy here that we think we can run with, it doesn't have a real good chance of leaving this room unless school administration is on board. From there, I know we have talked a little bit, and I can totally appreciate the sentiment of not putting anything else on teachers' plates. They got a ton on their plates right now. But they also have to be instrumental in, in this practice, or this policy, or whatever it is that we come up with. And I think that's, if we had the school administration on board and the teachers on board, then we're talking about relative success. We really need to continue to push forward and make sure that parents understand why this is an important thing to consider. And, and students, for that matter. And collectively, it'll still be a challenge. It'll still very much be a challenge.
What we do, my experience, having gone through this as a high school principal, is no matter what you do, you're never gonna have 100% of any set of stakeholders will be in compliance or be willing to enforce whatever we decide. It's never gonna be 100%.
Yeah.
My teacher. But I do think there's an important point here, which I didn't realize, is if you get a significant percentage of any of the stakeholders that will buy into whatever we decide to do as far as policy, there's a good chance that over time, it will succeed. Especially if they start to see some value in what they may not be for at the beginning. But if there's just enough that it is being done, those teachers who now can begin to see, I'm mostly speaking about teachers, because that was my most experience, as they see that it is starting to work, then you'll get other teachers that will get, oh, this does work. And I'm not the only one. I don't have to be the only one fighting in the classroom, because now this is working, and many other teachers are doing it. So I'm just gonna be joining. We don't need to get 100%, we're not going to get 100%. But we need to get enough that it will tip the scales to have a policy that will work.
Right. Totally agree. And I, and I think that's gonna be the same case with even the student population as well. And, and really, even if we're, you know, we're gonna push and, and push for 100% buy-in, most certainly from staff up. And, and, you know, we talked about different mechanisms that we could make sure that we have in place so that we're following what the expectations are of this policy and of these practices that we prescribe. I, I think if we even have the majority buy-in, then many of these problems that originate from cell phones, like increased violence in public schools, fights, drugs in public schools, all of those things are diminished greatly, if we have a relative success in implementing this policy. Because right now, I, I think one of the things that came out of the committee is that, and I don't know how much we really all appreciate it. This generation has, and we have, a more intricate communication system than we ever had. They have one, we're still walking around the hallways with two-way radios. They have webs of communication as it pertains to things. So very complex webs that even go beyond the school building. Just talking to my daughters, I take an appreciation for all, all of the number of different ways that they have to, to communicate and use those cell phones right now. So I think any, any success, which of course, we're pushing for, for great success, and I think, I think the environment right now is the one that's suited for, for better success, is going to benefit us. But let me push forward a little bit, because I know we've got time issues. That second packet, you can see a number of good model policies in there, if you guys want to take a look at them at a later time. At the conclusion of this meeting, I think this was an important kind of epiphany that we arrived at. Most of these policies now, with the exception of a few, prescribe to one approach. And we determined in all of our research that there's really three types of approaches that schools have taken. And this is in general. And this is in general. The first approach is to allow the student to keep possession of their cellphone, but for them to have it off, powered off and off their person, meaning in a locker, in a backpack, in a purse, away from the urge of reaching in your pocket. So powered off through the remainder of the instruction, the, the instructional day, with some providing an exception for lunch or sometime where they can text mom and dad and say the schedule's changed or something like that. So, some of them have that exception, some of them do not. So in general, the one approach is kid keeps possession of the phone, it cannot be seen during the instructional day, it has to be powered off and off your person. The second general approach is one where the school takes possession or temporary possession of cellphones. And you'll, you see this sometimes with the calculator caddies that are sometimes hanging up on, on doorways and such, those type of approaches. Many school divisions have moved away from those type of approaches because we're taking possession of the phone and, and we're accepting some level of liability. So if we've got 30 cellphones and calculator patty's pockets and one of them goes missing, then, then how do you manage that? How do you, how do you treat that? And then third is a relatively new concept, and you guys have heard and read a little bit about these yonder bags, where again, student keeps possession of their phone, they are issued a bag, the bag has a locking mechanism on it where the bag can be, can remain locked during the instructional day and open back up at the end of the instructional day. Those are really the three approaches that you'll see. I think they all have pros and cons associated with them. And if you guys wanna dig just deeper into that right then and there, that was really the basis of our conversation. Which of those three do we think is most advantageous and beneficial and, and not as risky to take on? And then from there, what we did in our final meeting, and again, drumroll please, we began to, based on all of the information that we devised from the three committee meetings, we began to draft kind of some model, model policy, model practices. And that's that final document, and we pulled, and we pulled a lot of information from, like I said, existing policies and our conversation, and then speaking with just other superintendents and other school divisions. What you see in that model policy is we thought it was very important to start off with a rationale, you know, and again, this is that buy-in, this is, hey, why is it important to adjust cellphone policy? And then we get into the meat of the policy, you can see that it was important to the committee to really differentiate between K8, elementary and middle school and high school with many of the things that we do, you know, not just cellphones, but really all kinds of responsibilities. We have a tiered system. We're very restrictive with our elementary school students, they're walking in, in lines down the hallways. By the time you're getting to the middle school, you're getting a little more freedom, and by the time you're getting to the secondary school, you know, we're expecting a little more responsibility to be associated. So that's what you see in, in that section there. And then if you turn the page, you'll see the consequences associated with infractions, first, second, and third. And then we had a section there for exceptions, because we saw, if you, if you read the Ask the Superintendent responses, and even in reading many of the policies, with technology the way it is now, there are certain medical devices, diabetics use their cellphones, there are certain situations which would require us to put a clause in there that says there are exceptions. Meaning if you need to check your blood, blood sugar via your doctor's note or whatever it is, then that is, as many of our policies state, per administrative approval, there is a, there, there's a possibility for an exception. So that's just that clause there. Also in that exception, many of the folks on the committee, including students, had that second clause there, school staff are professionals and should model appropriate use of technology. It is the, it is the expectation that school staff will use their cellphones while not in the presence of students. That was a conversation, making sure that we model appropriate behavior when it comes to whatever policy we devise. So again, what you'll see in this model policy, and I'll stop here, and I know I've been talking a lot, but this policy is, is one that falls more in line with that first approach, that off your person, powered off, can't be seen during the instructional day, with an exception for high school students to have it during lunch. It was determined that high school students have mini-curricular and extracurricular activities, work responsibilities, things of that nature that could change their PM schedule. So providing that short opportunity for them to make any of those changes would be that lunch period. But outside of that, from elementary, middle, and high, it's completely out of sight, powered off, off of your person for the instructional day. And I can stop there. Any questions?
I'm just looking at something, and it's a shame, this is against federal law. They actually have cellphone jammers that we could jam an entire school and no one, no one would be able to use cellphones. But it is illegal. It's against federal.
Yeah.
That would have been a solution.
How do our principals feel about the cellphone policy coming into play? Especially high school, because that's where it seems to be the biggest issue.
I, I've had some individual conversations, he's had a little bit of trepidation about it, I don't wanna speak for him. I, I think he's a little worried about becoming the cellphone police and, and having to, I, the way he describes it, and again, he can do it much better than I can, but he oftentimes interprets this as, as really an addiction, you know? So, so if, if you had 1,500 alcoholics, right, that are addicted, that's an extremely difficult thing to adjust behavior, extremely difficult. And it, I think we'd all agree, there's a lot of similarities right now between cellphone use and adolescence. So I think he's a little concerned about what that's gonna look like as far as an implementation approach, and also one that, and, and I told, I came from being the high school principal. There, there's a principal and three assistant principals at the high school. If most of this weight is shouldered on four people, it will not be successful. Whatever we decide to do as it, as it pertains to infractions or implementation or enforcement, even to be remotely accessible, we need the other 150 adults in that high school to say, I'm on board with this. So I think those, that's, that's his concern.
I think they are on board.
I, I think they will be. I, I'm hoping they will be, but again, we're talking about 150 different people and 700 people across our division that have different appreciations for cellphones. And I can tell you, you know, I, I know how Ray feels. I know how Ray feels. Ray, Ray is very much interested in, in limiting cellphone use, but I can tell you, there's just as many teachers too that some find value in it, some, some will, will ask students to pull up the periodic table, some will ask students to use it for Kahoot or, or other online games that they can use. Now, the answer to that at this point moving forward is that we are a one-to-one school division. Every student is issued a Chromebook. So much of what we're using our cellphones for right now, we can and should eventually be able to use our Chromebooks for. There's some limitations though. Our Chromebooks, and you know, Tony, that comes to our school board meetings, his quote was, if you want me to use this Chromebook, it needs to be as powerful as my cellphone is. The Chromebooks that we currently have are not as powerful as, as cellphones. So, so the processing speeds and stuff like that is what he was referring to. We're looking into, and we're having challenges in, in terms of using the Chromebook as, as a communication tool between students and parents. One of the things that we wanted to do was say, hey, this is the answer, here's a, every student has a Chromebook, so if there's a change in your schedule, then jump on the Chromebook and professionally send your parent an email saying my schedule's changed after school. The challenge with that is this. What we have right now with our Google system, we're a Google school, we're a Google school division, we have what's called the walled garden, which is like a safe place for email for our students. Our students right now cannot use their email to like, go outside of that walled garden, meaning they can't email Chick-fil-A in order to go, okay? They can't get outside of the school network. If we were to open it up so that they could email their parents, we would be opening it up to a lot of nefarious activities, spam and other things. We tried to see if there was a way to whitelist only parent emails, meaning every student would, would have two emails, three emails that they could email back and forth to. The only way we think we can be successful in, in doing that is manually. And for 2,500 students, two emails apiece, that change pretty frequently as far as moving in, moving out, and many other reasons why those emails change, that would be a challenging thing to stay on top of with our current staff. So, we're still working through some of those finer details, we're, we're hoping to get there. The other thing, as I mentioned early on, was that a lot of times, it's, it, there's this perceived trump card that if we can say, you know, for safety reasons, my kid needs to have their cellphone, meaning if there is a school issue, a school crisis, then having that cellphone is beneficial. I don't think it will be, really don't. I mean, anytime I've ever been in a situation that is mass in nature, number one, the cellphone towers, the cellphones don't work. I've had a couple times in my career, one of the most recent, I remember the earthquake that we had in Louisiana, the whole building starts shaking and everyone's trying to pick up the phone and call someone, you, you get a busy signal, it does not work. The other important thing to consider is if that's an actuality and we're having an issue within our school building, active shooter or something of that nature, I can promise you that our emergency protocols do not involve anyone jumping on cellphones and, and making phone calls. We're, we're locked down, we're out of sight, we're quiet, we're away from the windows and everything else. So again, I think, you know, and, and the most important thing, I would say, on that same conversation, is in those situations, and you, you guys may have had this experience in yourself, when information starts to seep out of the school in, in a situation like that, it's often very inaccurate. So what you're doing is you're trying to manage a crisis situation and also address all the inaccuracies that are floating around in Facebook world and everything else, where ideally, if the school could be the one that relays factual, accurate, and timely information, then I think we are more successful in working our way through the crisis more efficiently and effectively. That's a lot I'm throwing at you guys, so I'll stop and, and take any comments, thoughts, considerations.
Well, to the, to the email issue and the whitelist, I think that's probably way too labor-intensive, but how about like, you know, 20 years ago, kids walked to the office and used the phone?
Yeah.
The one with the line. Or they have a phone in their classroom, I mean.
Yeah. So that, so we have an FAQ running on this thing here, and it says, as a parent, how do I get in touch with my child during the school day? Right now, again, this is totally in draft form, if families need to get a message to students, please contact the main office. For important items, if you need to, you can send any, this is what I was talking about with the Chromebook, and we're trying to figure out whether or not that's going to be a possibility. But as I just said, in the event of a school emergency, cellphone use is not permissible. Cellphone use during a school emergency is considered unsafe and unreliable. During safety protocols or inclement weather, administration will send factual information as soon as possible via the King George County Schools Alert System, so.
As far as the Chromebook goes, were you, are you CC'd on those emails that I got?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so that, that's what I'm talking about.
Cause I asked IT if we could use our Chromebooks, and so far, the answer is no.
Yes.
To contact their parents. In other words, what I was thinking was that we can get their email address, just like we use Power School or whatever, so they could get in there and they could actually email their parents and we could put that in. They say it won't work. At this point, we're still, still looking.
Yeah, I think it's very dangerous to open that up for that because it opens up to everything.
If they, if you open it up to everything, we've already had enough problems that we don't want to do that, when it's simply restricted to one or two emails, and it's just not gonna work.
Yeah, we went through that, again, retired 12, 13 years ago, the last four or five years, the cellphone thing was continuous. But the key to all this, like I said before, is if you can get the administration and a significant number of the staff that will be willing to help make sure that this is all enforced, it will, it will influence the others then to get on board too. Obviously, we want all the staff to.
Absolutely.
One thing you don't have on here is, is, which I hate to even say publicly, is, you know, consequences when staff members are not enforcing the policy.
We talked about it, and.
And I'm not saying, you know, this is a very delicate thing. Obviously, you want everybody to be on board with it, but we all know that it's gonna be, some staff members are just not gonna see the value that we do. I, I am, do have a question, is, I noticed that in the middle school, they're not to use it during lunch, but in high school, they are allowed to use it during lunch. Tell me why, why you decided that's okay?
So we had the middle school principal on the committee, they thought that, that it was a, a good tiered approach for eventually allowing some level of, of responsibility and freedom at the secondary level. So, they thought limiting it a little more at the middle school would be more appropriate. They've had some success right now in limiting it more at the middle school. The other conversation that came up was a desire particularly at the middle school level to encourage socialization during lunchtime, you know, making sure that, you know, we don't have a few kids that are staring at a screen by themselves when we would much rather than prefer, prefer having, having them going out and finding somebody to eat lunch with.
What about, just a thought, and I haven't tried this, I'm not sure, there, I mean, whatever we suggest, I'm sure there's some school somewhere that's done it. What about in high school, rather than just blanket during every lunch period, what about, say, one or two days a week, they're allowed to use their phones, and if things are going well, there's no issues, the possibility is that that could increase? And if the things do go on, then it begins to decrease again. It's just a thought.
But that's a good idea.
Provide an incentive, in other words, saying every Friday or, or Wednesday or whatever, you're allowed to use cellphones, and as long as, you know, there's not all of a sudden an increase in bullying or these kinds of things, or discipline or whatever, then all of a sudden, you know what? After a couple of months, we're gonna look to go in two days a week. And so what happens is then, then they begin to self-regulate things, and they say, hey, wait a minute, we may eventually get to all five days a week in the last month of school.
So it's not a right, it's, it's more of a privilege.
Right.
Yeah. That's controlled by school administration.
Yeah, I know it'd be tough at first, but then you're thinking, okay, you're gonna start out with this one day a week and then you're gonna lose, you might even lose that, but as long as you're not using it in the rest of the time, on Fridays, you can use your cellphones during lunch. It's just a thought.
So, I'm kinda concerned about even the idea of the kids carrying the phones around just knowing it's there and having that temptation. And so it's a little bit foreign to me, but I understand that kids don't really use their lockers anymore. What's, what's, what's the deal there? What's, what is that? I mean, I'm thinking about the option, just making, requiring cellphones to be in lockers.
Yeah, they, they don't use their lockers at all anymore.
Anyway, can I say something about that? The last couple of years.
Yeah, they're not even assigned, yeah.
The last couple of years, the lot, it was beginning to happen 12, 13 years ago when I'm retiring, is what was happening is backpacks were being used more and more, then kids were losing the combination of their locker. I mean, I had this stream all day long, because we were requiring some things and they couldn't carry certain things. And I'm telling you, after a while, it was like, I, we just, it just, okay, you know, you don't have to have a locker if you don't want to. I can see why schools eventually didn't require it all.
We, we removed them from. We, we removed them from. It was funny, I was principal of Rappahannock High School and the old principal used to always, the the har, the hallway was very narrow. And he had this running jokes that he told for ten years about how we were, had a wider hallway on order. Wider hallways on order, wider hallways on order. And so we ended up taking the lockers out of the hallway and made it a wider hallway because nobody used them. Um, I don't know if it's just inconvenient, I hear from students, sometimes the locker is in a a place that isn't on their way to class.
Right.
Um, they just, they don't use them. So at the high school, when I was at the high school, we started, we would issue them every year and it was at an expense. Because every year, uh, company has to come back in and and recalibrate the locks and change the combinations. Uh, so. We, we would clean out the lockers at the end of the year and open every single one of them up in preparation for the recalibration.
Alone was a two-day thing.
Yeah, that that was a huge job in itself and uh, by the end, there was maybe a dozen lockers in the whole school that had anything in them at all. Um, and you can tell, like, somebody put it in there on the first day of school and never came back and visited it. And uh, then we went to buy um. Uh, students could ask for one and and we would have those in a certain place in the school and. I don't know, maybe it may have been a dozen lockers and they just, they don't, they don't go to lockers anymore. Yeah, they don't use them.
I guess it's partially the transition from textbooks to just a laptop.
I think that might be something to do with it as well. They're not walking around with, like, when we went to school, we probably had a textbook for every class and I don't think that's the case anymore.
And they, and going back and forth to the lockers was, you know, part of the issue and.
I have a question about the Chromebooks.
Okay.
Are we, is it a huge expense to get ones that are as fast as cellphones? Like, has anybody looked into that? Are we already behind on that? I'm asking for Tony.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, I think it is, it is expensive. Uh, where we are is um. Our seniors that are going out will have the oldest Chromebooks, they're kind of in that first round of uh. When we initiated the one-to-one, uh, so we'll, every year now, we'll end up purchasing a new set of Chromebooks. And Hillary's always on the lookout for increased specs in those Chromebooks. Um, but again, I mean, if you think about what cellphones can do now and what you're, you know, this, a Chromebook on average, a school Chromebook on average is like two to three hundred bucks. An iPhone is, is, what is, what is it, fifteen hundred bucks, something like that? Um, so the processing speed on them is is definitely different.
So were you talking about using them as a phone? Is that what you're referring to?
No, using the Chromebooks, um, one of the comments was that the Chromebooks weren't as fast as the phone for any Google search or anything.
Oh.
That's uh.
It's not, okay.
Right.
So you, you know, appropriate use of cellphones, what you're saying is some people, they're, they could find things faster on a cellphone than they could on a Chromebook.
Well, that's what one of the students said, yes, and so I was just asking how, you know, how could we do that, but we probably can't.
Yeah. Um, I, I, yeah, there's a, again, this lunch thing, I, I would just like to see what can we do to make incentives? And so that idea of maybe having it just one day a week, maybe two, I don't know, but no more than that. So that there is a process of increasing it and a process, process of decreasing it, depending on how the lunch does that day or that week or month or whatever.
I, I agree, I like that. So. Moving forward. We certainly need to devise a policy, uh, cause we currently do not have one. There's a number of decent model policies across the Commonwealth right now. Uh, and in fact, I know, Mr. Rolls, you even sent one right before the meeting from Virginia Beach, which is, is a good one. Um. A lot of what you'll see in that. I say policy, but more, that that goes into probably, that's, that's a lot of practice in there. Um, what you'll see in the policy that Mr. Rolls shared is one that really just from the school board level. Uh, gives some general um, expectations. Uh, that would be associated with maybe, you know, a policy associated with a regulation. That uh, would look more similar to what we provided. Uh, or, you know, we consider and discuss it on another route. I, I'm interested in what the board.
I think before we talk about policies, we need to talk about buy-in from administrators, from teachers, uh, from parents. That's where we, in my opinion, that's where we need to go first, is for the buy-in.
I appreciate that.
We get the buy-in, then we can work on the policies.
What?
How can you do that?
Yeah, but how would you do that in terms of, because you're gonna get, um, obviously. My guess is you'll get sixty percent, you know, have one side and forty percent the other. I mean. I, I think with teachers and administrators is very valuable, uh, teachers, excuse me, parents. I just, what would we gain more than what we already know?
Probably, probably not much, except their support.
Uh, yeah.
We're gonna gain their, their support if we, if we educate them, if we educate them on. Why uh, cellphones are bad for their, for their students. Um, but I, I think you're right, the, the bigger. Buy-in that we're gonna need is from the teachers and administrators. And then, you know, we, you mentioned consequences there, of course, no one needs to, you know, that's, that's not where we're at. We're not a, you know, trying to do that, but uh, we have to have the buy-in for this to work.
So maybe a staff survey of. Where we are, I'm just brainstorming, so.
I'm, they're gonna wanna see, what is your idea, you know?
Right.
That's too big.
Well, I'm, I'm, I was thinking about branching it off of.
What we're already talking about.
What we're already talking about. Just so that we can frame it a little bit.
Yeah, you're gonna have to show them something.
Yeah.
They can make a decision as whether they could do this or they wouldn't not want to do.
Or maybe just leave it open-ended and um, you know, once we get us, you know. Move that a little bit further out of, at a draft mode, uh, and and get something that's a little more polished. Which we can do relatively quickly, then. Send that out to staff and administration and just generally get some, see, see what uh, feedback is.
And and the reason I'm bringing it up, because you and I talked earlier, but I called several schools this afternoon in Richmond. Because there's six, they, tell me, there's six schools in Richmond went to this no-phone policy. Uh, one in particular, I just dropped it because it was just too hard to do. So the administration, the teachers, uh, they had their, yonder bags and now they're, it's just. You know, they gave in to the, to the.
Hassle.
Of the hassle, yes, they gave in to the hassle. And that is what I do not want to see here.
Me too. How long do they get it? Cause I do hear stories about how it's a tough transition, but once you do it, then it's, it's much better.
And and I think what, what we do. And and how. I think making it simple to enforce is important. I think making it something that um. I, I, from what I read from, from that third approach, that, that yonder bag, it's complex, it's, there's a lot of complexities to it. Um, which, which I think become challenging. Um, regardless, and this is what we talked about, he, if if we want. To be more restrictive with anything. We are drawing a new line in the sand. Period. Look at it from a very basic standpoint. We're talking about, you know. Really about twenty-five-hundred kids, middle school and high school. Whenever we draw a new line in the sand as a teacher, as a parent or whatever, there's gonna be a certain number of kids that are gonna put their toe over it. We have to be prepared. To collectively enforce the expectations and I think what we need to make sure that we establish, to Mr. Frank's point, is. Collective buy-in and and I think it's easy to do that with the understanding that. This is, this is for, this is good for kids. Right? There's all kinds, there's articles in there about anxiety issues, about, you, you name it. We know the problems that are associated with it. If we can begin to convince staff, you know, maybe part of the survey talks about what issues do you know are associated with. Cellphone use in public schools or cellphone use among adolescents. Uh, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud.
Interrupt, there's one thing here that having, again, and I apologize because I have been through this. These level of offenses, they're not gonna work.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I went through so many first offenses, second offenses, that they're, they just don't work. And part of the reason is because it gets even more burden on a teacher, you know, the, you know, was this your first offense? No, I don't wanna do that. Second offense, oh, my, my parents are working, they can't come get the phone, it's your third offense, well, you're not gonna get it for two days. I finally threw them all out. And I had one rule and it worked. And I think I've already mentioned this. First time you see that phone, you take it, it's in the office, fifteen dollars. You can get it anytime after school's out, period, that's it. So there was no first, second, third, fourth, that worked.
What did you do with the money?
Pardon?
What did you do with the money?
Where did I get the money?
No, no, the, the money that was collected, how was it used?
I had, I told you about that, they had jokes. Hilarious, but you do have to be careful how you spend that money now, you know, that.
Well, we, I don't think we can even collect a fee for that anymore.
Get board approval, it, I, I, yeah, I had to get board.
So every year.
Not allowed to do it as an administrator.
Yes.
I called the lawyer and the lawyer says, wow, you can do that, but you've gotta give board approval. And it was allowed.
You know, every year we have to do the fee, that we have to um, approve the fees that we charge. It would be through that avenue where we would have to include that fee.
Well, call the lawyer.
I don't know, I don't, I don't mind betting it a little bit.
Saying it, when you went from this.
No, I know what you're saying, because I, I've been there too.
Offenses.
I've been there too, I know.
I like the idea. Maybe a cheaper fee because of parents who can't afford fifteen dollars?
Well, I hear, what I'm, and I'll be devil's at and afford to break the rules, I hear inequity.
Or pay for iPhone, yeah.
Fifteen dollars for me may not be fifteen dollars for you. That's, so that's one thing that.
You know, again, my school was ninety percent, ninety-five percent Title I. The whole, I'm K through twelve.
Yeah.
Or you can do like fifteen, whatever, and then if they can't afford to pay it five days in, in the box, I don't know.
Well, if it's not money, it's, it works.
Worked.
Yeah.
All I gotta say, I had to get board approval.
I, I think that would be great.
Limit, there was something like I couldn't do twenty-five or twenty, I can't remember, there was something about the amount. That I wasn't allowed to go above anything, a certain amount, I mean, even if you made it five dollars, I'm just saying that it, it was interesting. Cause at first it didn't seem to work and then after it got confiscated three or four times within a, two weeks, um, people were, the kids were just like. And it was so easy for teachers, they just grabbed it and they had pieces of paper wrapped around, put the name in and just sent it to the office.
We talked a little bit about that and we were going to, as far as the consequences are concerned. We were gonna not, so, so again, it was, the first time was a warning, that's not usually not an issue, it's, hey, you're using your cellphone. I, I'm, I'm making note of it. The second time you get into that, that power struggle where you're supposed to confiscate the phone, and to Mr. Bush's point is, I've, I've been there. Um, and I know many teachers have, yeah, and so.
Terrible.
The, the thought from the, um, actually, this was Mr. Watson at the high school said, I don't want my teachers taking cellphones. He said, just. Contact the office, send the student to the office, administrator will take the cellphone so that the teacher doesn't get into this power struggle.
I had some.
It's still, it's still hard. And then, like you said, you get to the third thing and it, and it's, a parent has to come pick it up and. As the principal, I, I, there were a thousand reasons why somebody couldn't come pick it up and.
That's not work at all.
Yeah, that was, that was my, that's.
So whatever we do with this, that part has to change. I don't know what to, yet I just had that one suggestion. If it's illegal or whatever, because there're gonna be problems with any of them, but I can almost promise this one, it's just not gonna work.
Yeah.
And I also think that maybe offering an incentive for the lunch thing.
I like that, yeah.
Um, that, that may be something to think about.
I like that. And it, so I'll look into the fees. Is there any other approach that we could take to consequences that would be effective?
I like that one. It's easy on the teachers. I, I read what Mark said and I agree with.
I wouldn't say it's easy, it's.
Easier on the teachers, it's less keeping track of what, number two, number three, number four. Also, I did read where, I think Mark said it, um, that administrator coming to the classroom. Because it could still be an issue with go, go to the office and the kid saying, no, I don't wanna go.
It would, it can be, yeah.
So I think something like that is simple, but would work. And it's proven to work maybe in a different state, but it's, you know.
I, I think that'll work also, you know, we look at the. Levels of currency, you know, that doesn't work.
Yeah.
You know, the first time you're targeting, second time, the third time.
Yep.
None of that works.
That's right.
So, you know, I, I, I agree with that.
And even if, if the money thing is not, we can't do it, which you're right, things change so much. But, uh, and it may have just changed in the last twelve years, maybe they can't even do it in Texas anymore, I have no idea. But um, I do think that whatever we do, if we can't use the fees, don't do all these levels, it's almost do one thing. Whatever it is that one thing we do, you do one thing when the teacher or its administrator sees the phone. You do that every time, but it's just one thing. And it's not just a warning every time, obviously.
Oh, sure.
Something, and whatever, that, that would be my suggestion, whatever you do, take these consequences, make it easier on teachers and everybody else, do, do one consequence and just keep doing the same one. It's gotta be pretty serious, you know, goes to the office or whatever. And uh, with the first offense, every offense, it goes to the office and if you can't do a fee, uh, something.
Can we do community service requirements?
Man. No.
You can, because we do it, we already do that.
I don't know, I mean, I guess.
Once or twice.
That would get a little complicated.
Yeah.
It'd be like.
Yeah, it'd be hard to manage.
Know what the law is on that, where the weekend award, community service, that may have to be done by a judge, yeah.
Yeah, cause then you gotta.
We do it all the time.
How's that gonna be managed? And then somebody's, oh, this is your fifth time, five hours, I, I don't know.
Yeah, it'd be hard to manage.
You'd have to do, what was nice about the money thing, for every time, same thing every time, fifteen dollars and it's over. And we don't, we didn't write it down, we didn't care how many times. They did.
Yeah.
But. Bottom line, no matter what we do, we gotta have the buy-in, gotta have the buy-in, we, we have to have the buy-in.
I think a consequence and a reward would be good.
Yeah, and, what you saying, Ray? Any comments?
And, we're, we're here till Thursday. Um, real quick, uh, I think we have a tendency in our society, have a tendency for Band-Aids on cancers. If parents feel like that cellphone makes their kids safer at school, that's a separate issue. It's had nothing to do with a cellphone. We gotta make parents feel like their kids are safe at our schools. A whole bunch of things we could do there. Cellphones, but when kids having a cellphone, they come with the earbuds. Automatic. And that's where we get into the dangers in the hallways, cause kids put those earbuds in, don't hear a thing that's going on. I, I would be okay with saying you can use your cellphone at lunch. I think with them having their Chromebooks, deal with your Chromebook during class. I don't think that's an unreasonable thing.
Yeah, you know, the earbud thing, I think that would have to be included in this.
Uh, we talked about that, it.
I saw something.
Yeah, they call them, because it wasn't just earbuds, they call them personal communication devices or something like that, because anything. Earbuds, smartwatches was a big conversation. Which are becoming more and more, um, you can now do everything with a smartwatch that you can do with a cellphone. Um, what else was it?
Any, any of the, it had to be.
Applets.
Yeah, any of the devices like that, except for the Chromebook.
There was one policy, it might have been Prince William, that went into pretty great detail on what those, uh, oh, what is considered a personal communication device? Any device that can connect using Wi-Fi or cellular data, including but not limited to cellphones, tablets, laptops, gaming systems, smartwatches and Bluetooth devices.
Bluetooth would get that one.
Yeah, that's anything that connects to your phone.
Kathy and I went to the elementary school on Friday. And we asked a question, some teachers who we're talking to, we asked a question about cellphones. I said, well, you don't have a problem with cellphones because they're elementary. It said, no, we do have a problem, especially with the smartwatches.
Yeah.
And I mean, this one teacher was talking about a second grader, a seven-year-old who has the cellphone. And they have a problem with her being on the cellphone.
And her parent has a problem if the teacher doesn't let her use it.
Yes.
Oh, parents are gonna definitely need to.
And actually, with the younger kids, and this is a whole can of worms here, but there's, there's a product. It's not like your Apple Watch smartphone. It's called Angel Sense or something like that. And basically it's, it's a, it's a quick link to the, so a parent can turn it on. Like as a speaker or, or, so if the kid has one of these watches on, parent pushes a button and they're listening to the classroom.
It's against the law.
Yeah.
It's been, that, that's gone to court.
Yeah, didn't we talk about that? Didn't we?
No, but I've seen it. It has gone to court.
Well, yeah, what law?
Um, I have to look at it, but I've seen it.
Yeah, it's, um.
I know, you have single party recording is legal in Virginia, so.
Yeah.
Not sure if that would be.
Well, it's gotten, there's been a couple of cases.
Yeah, there has been a couple of cases.
That'd be valuable to all this.
Yeah.
You, in a, listening in the classroom without the permission of the teacher.
Again, I think it'd be best for the kids just not even have the cellphone anywhere near them. So I know we've kind of got reed locker room lockers, so there's. That would require installing new equipment to be able to enforce that and just have them.
Something you may want.
Oh, thank you.
Drop off their phones for the day. We, we don't have equipment to, to do that right now. We'd have to make, buy stuff to be able to do that.
Say it again, do what?
For the phones, for the kids, just to leave the phone somewhere for the entire day and just to have it with them.
We don't have the capability to do that right now. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, we'd be so liable with that too, I think, man.
He's talking about bringing the lockers back.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, you have the new old lockers and that. At, you know, at work you can't have cellphones in certain places, so you have just the individual lock things that would be much smaller, you know, and not as big. You know, as a locker room. Or as lockers.
Cubby lockers or something somewhere.
Yeah, when you, and you pull the key out and so it's not really liable at all. They have the key. And we might have a master, but you know, no one's gonna use that to mess their phones.
Anybody done that? That's.
We've looked at some, um, cubby, cubby lockers.
Yeah.
Seems like it's. Buy those for like the classrooms. Figuring out. We looked at some that were, um. Plexiglass, clear Plexiglass, so you could put your phone in it and lock it. The problem we were having was with. You know, does, is a kid locking it? Is a teacher locking it every time? Who has the key? Is there two keys? Um, those are part of that conversation. I think, I think regardless of what we do. I'm just trying to, I'm thinking through this and as we keep talking about it. I keep thinking teacher buy-in is like, it, it's, it's all about teacher buy-in. Because it doesn't matter what the mechanism is. It doesn't matter if it's a lockbox, a locker. Or off your person powered off in a, in a, in a bag somewhere. It's that teacher that has their, his or her feet on the ground every day that says, this is the, this is the expectation. And making sure that we get buy-in from our staff is going to be pivotal in the success of this.
That's why I put the cubbies in the hallway and not make it a teacher's problem. Like, we don't see it all day long. It's like each class, you gotta like get it out. It's, they have their key and they can maybe get it out at lunchtime if that's, if that's the policy. But otherwise, yeah, because then the teacher has to worry about it. It's just, I don't want to see a thing at all. If I see it, then should be taken care of my first period of each day.
Some of the kids we got in high school, it'd be fifteen.
Fifteen hundred lockers.
Little cubbies.
My concern is, we already have a, had a policy where teachers probably were, just gave up because they got tired of the fight. And that's where putting them away and out of sight would be beneficial because that takes it off the teacher not to have to worry about it every day with thirty kids. Hundred and thirty or sixty kids in, in a day.
I think a couple of things too is, um. We're all part of this experiment when it comes to cellphones. We're, we're all kind of what they call digital immigrants where we kind of migrated into this where we are now in the world. Kids have always lived, I mean, they've never known a world without a cellphone. I think as I look at that. Even as a principal, there was a time where. I don't want to say it was encouraged, but there was, there was a, a, a very strong camp that was saying for a long time. That there's great value in using a cellphone.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and so. With that being said, I think there's still those people. But with that being said, I think right now the environment's pretty prime for getting back to a more restrictive environment. Because we're seeing it coming out of the general assembly, we're seeing it across the state, we're seeing it across the country. And we're now starting to, as I said, living this experiment, appreciate all of the health effects that are coming from. Increased cellphone use with adolescents. So, like I said, I, I, I don't know, I don't think it was just this. Um, we gave up, we couldn't do the cellphone policy anymore, which was part of it. But it was also this belief at one time where, hey, we can fit this into education and make it work somehow. And I, I think people are starting to move back away from that again.
We even had at the beginning, I don't know, maybe it's just my age again, being in the classroom. For a while when they first had cell, well, let me back up even before, just before, just as cellphones were starting to come. They had these classroom sets of things where you could do something, um, on a, a smart, um.
Yes.
Board, that would also connect to thirty different devices in the classroom. And then they could choose things and you get instant, um, notification of what was going on by them punching the button.
That's, that still happens now. That's like the Kahoot thing.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Anyway, those were, were big. And then they were saying, well, your cellphones can do that. When the cellphones first started coming out, they were comparing it to that.
Yeah.
And you can use the cellphone for so many positive things and.
Right.
Especially in history and, uh, anyway, all kinds of stuff.
Exactly.
But, um, I, just a couple of suggestions. One is that whatever we do, I do think we should try to come up with a policy. But then hear from teachers at some kind of survey as to, you know, would you be willing to enforce this? Or what's the problem with enforcing or so on? But I think before we do that, it's not just a policy because we're at, we're at the policy level. You know, the administration level and how it's gonna be played out in each one of the schools, that's the tough level. And I do think that a couple of things, one is I think we need to look for incentives for the children, like the one lunch period a week. And maybe even in elementary, there's some kind of special incentive, even though right now they say, oh, it's not a problem, but it's becoming one. And maybe again, I'm having something, there's some special time once a, a month, even at an elementary. Where, um, maybe you could even bring your phone and do something if your parents agree. I don't know. I'm trying to think of an incentive piece for kids. Especially in high school, at least in high school, with this lunch thing or something like that. That's one. Second thing is that making sure these infractions somehow are gone from four to one.
Okay.
I don't know how to do that. The money thing is one idea. Like you said, it might not be legal or work now. I don't know. But still try to think of one where it's the same thing every time. That'd make it so much easier for the teachers. One time, could even give them little things that stick on the phone or whatever. You simply take their phone, you stick it on there and then you send it to the office and that's it. And they don't have to worry about first, second, what the kids, it's the same for everybody every time.
Yeah.
That really did make it a little easier for the teachers. Because again, when we had levels, then the kid would say, well, I'm on my third level and I'm not gonna be able to, so please don't do that, you know, it just, there's no discussions.
Is what it is.
Anyway, so the consequences from just to one. And then also buy-in from the teachers, once we have something, show it to them so we can get responses and then we can change it. And then also some incentive for the kids to, um, to, um, discipline themselves somehow. This is just me, guys. I'm just one voice in this.
I do think it's important to allow them to a, access the phone when they have to go play sports or something after school. I think, because that, I, I did hear from parents that even bought into like the new cellphone policy, but at least after school they can come. Hey, I'm done with practice, whatever, practice changes, things like that, yeah.
After school would be fine.
I think after school is fine. It's just that seven hours.
During the two thirty.
That's why we made it, made sure that it said instructional day. So in other words. If, if you're in, if you're being taught, you know, in school and. Even beyond just being taught in class, I think there's great values to limiting it in the hallways as well.
What about buses?
Um, there was conversation about buses. Uh, in fact, I think, I think we finally determined that. We weren't going to allow them on buses because buses had a fair number of issues as well. It's gonna be more, it, it's.
It's gonna be harder.
That would be so, we can say that, but for a kid sitting there in a bus seat doing this. Is going to be so difficult for a bus driver to address.
Well, you couldn't do it unless you're the monitors. How many buses do we have monitors?
No, we don't have, that, not, not enough. Not enough. Yeah.
Which has to bus driver, you can have it as a rule, but.
Yeah.
Almost be better not to have as a rule because it's almost as if you'd have a, a rule and there's no way we could enforce it.
Yeah.
So don't have a rule because they're gonna think, oh, well, look how easy it is to break them. I can break it at school too.
Yep. It just, I, I mean, it makes sense, but it would just be so hard to enforce.
Agree.
Yeah.
So do we wanna try to get a price to see for like cubbies to the hallway so they never come to classrooms? They're always in the hallway? Is there general interest in that?
What now?
Does he get a price for what, um, we would do to get cubbies for the high school? So that they never leave, they're in the hallway, they never come to classrooms, they're just out there.
You do, you know, there's so much technology going on with the, you know, the facial expressions. It sounds expensive, but I'm not so sure that it is. If you did something like that. I don't know. Rather than them carrying a key around. Maybe even a little.
You can get, you can get those little stretchy things and put keys on them like. Matt, Matt's talking about we have at, at, you know, we're, we're not allowed to take our phones at work. And then he just rared around their wrist, but, um, I would think that if we were gonna do that. We wouldn't want to have them all in one spot. So fifteen hundred students have to go to the same spot to drop them off and pick them up.
It'd be strategic, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, you'd have to think that through. You're right.
I was.
I'm just trying to, I, I'm trying to be a kid. I, I, I. I'm wondering if I'm gonna put my phone in there.
Well, then you're not gonna have it anymore. It's not confiscated.
Yeah.
What ones those kids are gonna say no?
Yeah, they're not gonna put the phone in there.
It's, it's unenforceable.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good point. I don't, I don't, I still see how we could.
Taking a fifteen hundred dollar phone and putting it in a case, never gonna happen.
I don't think they're gonna put it in it. I, when, when we started talking about those bags a little bit, many people's knee-jerk reaction was. I'm just not gonna bring it to school. Which I said, fine, that's, that's a great answer. That's a good answer.
Yeah.
Um, this isn't that, this isn't that approach though. This is, they're still bringing it to school. And at that point, they're gonna say, well, I'm just gonna leave it off and, and in my backpack and I'm not putting it in there.
As long as it's not seen, that's fine, right? I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. Which is, which is kind of, eh, eh, you know, that's, that's where we are and it doesn't cost anything. You know, if we say out of sight, off.
You know, I just, I just thought of another thing. What about if you had those kind of locked bags? Because I know there's a problem by just, they take them home or you hand them out each day. And I'm just thinking, what about if they, when the cellphone is seen, they're, um. I wanna go these more consequences though. It's put in a locked bag. They cannot be unlocked until the end of the day. Still, that's the only, that's the only consequence. If it's seen, the teacher has. She just grabs the bag, these mini bags, sticks it in there and it's like the clothes. It has a little deal on it.
Yeah.
And it's stuck in the bag. They hand it back to them and then at the end of the day, they just go by the office and they have to swipe it.
So you can have a cellphone, just don't get caught. Well, I mean, and all you gotta do is.
Rules are the same. No, we wouldn't, no, this is the consequence side. This is only the consequence side. So if the cellphone, in other words, having this whole something like this, when it is seen, rather than confiscating it and sending it to the office and fifteen dollars to end the day or whatever. When it is seen, each teacher or they have these bags, we order so many. And when it's seen, they just grab the cellphone, put it in the bag and then hand the bag back to the student. It's locked in the bag. They can't use it.
I think I would calculate as a student then like, I might, if I really want to use it, I might as well use the last class period of the day because. I lose it for thirty minutes, who cares? Because it's worth the risk, so.
Okay.
Like it'd be a real, lot bigger problem later in the day.
Well, but it's still, they're not supposed to use, I mean, the rules, the rules are the same. It's just the consequences one. Because it's the same with any of these, if they do it at the end of the day, you could even.
No, fifteen dollars, fifteen dollars, whether it's the beginning of the day or the end of the day.
Fifteen dollars would be better. That's part's true.
If we can do that.
I'm just trying to, trying to think of ease for teachers. Um, and sticking it in a bag, um, you know, and then handing it back to the student, give me your phone. That's it, you know, ten seconds. That's even less than putting, writing their name on it and sending it down to the office.
You know, me being a short person and having a senior boy that's maybe angry. At the world and me telling him that I want his phone, that, hey, give me your phone. That's not a fight that I would want to do and I'm, and that's me personally.
How about if you were a teacher?
Yeah, and that's why Mr. Watson is, doesn't want the teachers to have to do that. He wants admin to take the phones away. So it's just best, but I understand it, to be honest with you, David, you're a big guy. You know.
I have some very small teachers.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I wouldn't want to deal with that every day. It's gonna be an everyday deal. Those, those are the rebellious kids who are gonna fight authority.
I can tell you one thing, it did happen again, having done this, is those few teachers at the beginning were just a few. In the hallways, they were the kind of the cellphone police, but then as they were confiscating them, it did happen less and less. And I, as administrator and as, I only had one assistant principal, I, we would walk down the halls. You know, about half of the passing periods when we could and I'd confiscate phones, put their name on it and take it down. Another thing too now, we were only six, seven hundred kids in my high school, about a third the size of this one. So we knew pretty much every kid's name, so, because you did have this thing of now, what is your name? Oh, my name is, um.
Yeah.
You know, Elvis Presley. There's a little problem with that, with this, that was one of the issues with that. It worked. But there was a little problem with the whole name thing, but the teachers would know their names, of course.
I think the bag idea, um, would work. Because it's not a liability on us if we can't do the money, because the money is definitely a good idea, but.
Put it in the bag?
Right. And that would probably be.
Or even do, you know, it's a Colleen's point, have the administrator do that.
Well, that's just what I read. Yeah, that, that's what I read.
I, I, yeah.
I feel like it's.
Something to check out.
It's gonna be labor intensive in the beginning, right? But when, if, if all the teachers are on the same page and that happens consistently for, you know, a period of time. I think the kids will get tired of that and then just comply. At least I'm optimistic.
Yeah.
I think it saves money too, having one bag in the classroom or a few in the classroom, rather than giving all the kids a bag.
That's what I'm wondering.
Because they're not gonna use it. Yeah, no, I know.
Companies won't let you order ten.
Oh, well, you'll need a good amount anyways because it's per classroom.
A hundred maybe at the most.
If, yeah.
Maybe five or six in each.
Possibility.
And make sure it's that, I don't know if they do, the same kind of thing you do on clothes, but if you break it, it gets.
Well, it's the, I'm pretty sure it's, the only ones I've seen is the Yonder bags. I mean, I don't.
That's the only one.
Yeah. It's called Yonder, Y-O-N-D-R.
Have a thing like on the clothes?
It was, yeah, it's magnetic. It's magnetic.
Yeah, it's.
Can maybe cut though.
But the only problem with that is you go on YouTube. And there's, from what I'm told, there's four different sites on there where you can get in it within sixty seconds.
Yeah, my daughter should have sent me.
Of course, the thing is, again, if you do it, you know, you don't have that many kids necessarily that would have those bags. And the teachers, you know, all this adds a little bit more. I simply write their name down. I'm giving them a bag. They don't have to take that name anywhere. Unless all of a sudden there's missing bags.
Yeah.
And then, you know, at the end of the day, they come and swipe it. Again, it's a little bit. I'm just trying to think of a way to make it easier for the teachers.
No.
Because if they damaged the bag, then we know, if you're giving out fifteen hundred bags, it's gonna be hard to control. If you're giving out only ten or twenty a day, you could control that.
Why couldn't the bag just stay in the teacher's room and then at the end of the day?
But again, then you got liability, you know, we're liable for that phone.
Okay.
Just like, they can get in those bags. They, and that, so to, I mean, they can take that bag and there's. Four or five different ways that they've got TikTok videos out there already for the Yonder bags that.
Yes, again, though, if you got.
Yeah.
But the whole point is, is you're not necessarily, you know, you gotta almost be planning to get caught and planning to use the phone. When you say, you know what, I, I, I don't necessarily need to even look at this because. I don't know, there's a little bit of incentive to why should I go through the hassle of getting a, a, you know, a certain kind of magnet or whatever. Because I don't plan on getting caught. And then when they do, it's a one-off thing. I don't know.
Uh, yeah, what I mean is like, why can't they teach, I know you said a liability, but maybe create a contract like we already do. And, and basically saying if your phone is taken and the teacher has to lock it in her, her desk, you are liable, we're not liable for the.
You have something in there like that. The cellphone is solely response, the student is solely responsible for his or her cellphone. The school and its staff are not liable for students' cellphones.
We can change it to where, even if it's taken away.
So you're saying put it in the bag and then put it in the teacher's desk?
And she can lock it up. She can get one cubby for all the phones, put their names on them, whatever. But that way the kids don't have the bags, the teacher does, and it gets locked away, create a.
Yeah.
Form where it's not, we're not liable for it. They accept the responsibility.
Legal use of the phone is acceptance of, you know, you give away.
Right, yeah.
Not liable there.
Right. I think that what we're struggling with is consequence because what we struggle with in edu, what we struggle with entirely right now with not just. The, the talk about cell phones is consequence, is, is ISS is ineffective, suspension is ineffective. Other things that we have determined are ineffective.
I think that.
And there's no silver bullet. So we can come up with the best idea that we can come up with and you're gonna have fifteen hundred kids with fifteen different.
Workarounds.
Yeah.
But I think David, I like what David said, I think that's the best. I let it go to the office.
Look at having not a, a level of consequences, that's.
Okay.
That makes sense for teachers. You can bring that up in the survey.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can do that.
Oh, maybe the fee thing too.
And I, I'm, we are now, we're on spring break this week, but we've got nine and a half, ten weeks of school left. So soon as we get back in session, I'm gonna try to get this out quick because we really, I mean, ideally, this, whatever we determine to do. We need to implement on day one of next school year. Uh, so any type of buy-in or feedback we're getting right now is gonna be, um, in this last quarter of the school year.
Of course, we can, I'm sorry, ever you gonna say something?
I, I just think this will be really beneficial for the whole school division. Cause I think you're gonna have teachers that are gonna stay around just because they don't have to fight the cell phone.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think that's gonna happen. So I think it's, it's, it's gonna be more than beneficial for us to make this work.
I agree. Can we get Ray Blazer on the record that he's not gonna retire?
Do you think we could?
One more comment if I, if I may. We gotta remember that what we're really doing at the high school is preparing them for life after high school.
Yeah.
And after high school, there won't be any lock boxes, won't be any lock bags, anything like that. If your boss says can't use your phone, you can't use your phone.
Right. That's true with a lot of things, though. You're preparing them for the real.
Good point.
I do think that the policy, we can come up with a policy, this is not bad really, what you have right here. It's how it's gonna be implemented and that's something that we don't have to come up immediately, but we need to come up with a policy. Which kind of gives permission for you and the administrators to be talking about tweaking a lot of this, how it's gonna be administered. So I think our particular responsibility in terms of a policy, I think we should look at this paragraph right here and see how we, what do you guys, the five of us, think how that should be tweaked? And not worry about all the others, so we can give some, eh, some information to, to Dr. Boyd and the others. But let's look at this policy and maybe have that even on the, the next board meeting.
I, I think, I think the rationale is important. I think what Mr. Roll shared with that Virginia Beach policy, there's some, some good work in that as well. But again, to your point, it's, it's just generally the board saying. We're setting the parameters for cell phones in, in King George County schools and then the, the remainder of this is.
Practice.
That's practice, frustration.
So why don't we, you know, put this one, you, if you think the one that, um, that, um, Matt, excuse me, Mr. Roll showed you. Put that one in there too or something and maybe have a couple of them for us to at least have a discussion and then the next meeting, we can even approve it. I think the policy itself is not gonna be too much of a discussion. It's limitation.
You're right. The policy is gonna be very vanilla. It's gonna be, this is what our expectations are for cell phone use in King George County schools. Yep. And these are the reasons why, which is that rationale.
Maybe if we'd let, uh. Students and parents know that this is coming, maybe they can start talking about it over the summer.
Yeah, that's right. That's good.
I'm just looking at this first page, which has policy, just this one, the rationale, probably this, this will be the thing that we'll have for a discussion and maybe the next board meeting and then approve it on the one afterwards. But then all this other stuff, which is extremely important.
It's practice.
It's practice, but that'll give us some time, but at least then the administration can begin working under a policy.
So would you prefer me, you, you want me to draft something that you can look at for?
Well, what is the rest of the, we can't vote on it. What is the rest of the board thing? Have them draft something like this, maybe even look at Mr. Roll's did.
I think that would be good.
The other five of us have something, send it to him.
Yep.
So we can look and discuss it at the next board meeting. Cause we can get moving on the policy, we just can't get moving on all the other stuff yet.
That's right.
We can't do that until we have a policy.
Sounds good. Yep, sounds good.
All right, this is a lot of stuff. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. There's, there's a lot here.
We, we've got fifteen minutes now to get into morale. I don't know whether it's gonna work or not.
I don't, that's a deep, deep.
I suggest we just dismiss and pick up on our time. I don't think we can do much in fifteen minutes.
Well, well, let's listen.
I think Mr. Frank has some things to share.
Frank, he's got some things to share, I think. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Rolls, but we do have a few minutes. We, it doesn't mean we're not gonna talk about it again. We will.
We're not voting on anything.
Go ahead, Mr. Frank, you had some ideas.
Yeah, I, I'm still looking at this, the way we look at, you know, in the, in the mindset of retaining teachers. And if we have, they improve the morale within the schools and of course, they, one of the big things that we can do, uh, is, is money. And that's not available right now, so I don't know where that goes from there. But the morale has to come from the administrators that are in those buildings. That's where the morale is gonna come from. Where, because teachers wanna feel supported. They wanna feel that they're valued. They wanna feel that they're listened to. They want a voice in what goes on within the school. And. If all of those things, and there's a ton more, are actually looked at and taken care of, I think that morale in the schools will improve. And do we have a morale problem within the schools? I would say, yes, we do. And I would think that you would agree with that.
I would, yeah, I would agree with that. And, and terms of public education everywhere, there, there is a morale problem when it comes to public schools right now.
But I'm, I, and I understand that, but I'm concerned with.
Yes.
King George.
George County.
Public schools and, and retaining teachers and retaining high quality teachers. How do we make them feel better about their job? Uh, feel better about coming to work in the morning, knowing that they're probably not gonna get a huge increase in salary.
Yeah, so I, I think I've told you guys before, there, there were two reasons. Twenty-three years ago at this point, that I decided to leave a much more lucrative profession and become a teacher. It was, I sat down, did the math and at that time, around two thousand, you could still map out a decent living. And, you know, you weren't gonna get rich, but you could still raise a family and feed everybody. That was the first consideration. The second one, and it, and it goes to speaking about this topic, is that. What I was doing at the time was not as rewarding as what I thought teaching would be. Uh, it was, it was, and, and still is a very noble profession. It's one where you appreciate. You know, what's looking back at you in the mirror. That's, that's kind of, you know, the MO of teachers is that you, you should walk out of there feeling like I'm making a difference. That second one, that second point, that, that nobility that used to be in this profession. Is greatly diminished right now. And it's greatly diminished because what's happened in public education. Is that, which is evidenced in this round of the General Assembly as well, is that we continue to put more and more on the shoulders of teachers. Uh, we, we have turned them into in facto parents. Uh, in the absence of parents in many occasion, in many instances. And while we've put all of that stuff on their shoulders, we've also decided that they don't do it, we criticize them. Uh, he, here's everything you need to do. I just keep thinking of a general, there's a bill in the General Assembly that just passed that says every year, the school now is responsible for sending home notice to tell parents about. How to safely store a gun in their house. Okay, I mean, there's nothing wrong with that, that makes sense. But once again, it's another straw on the camel's back of, here's one more thing that we want educators to do. And so I think to Mr. Frank's point, supporting teachers is extremely important. But right now, it's in the face of national media, local media. Parents, uh, there, there's a ton of, of, um, naysayers right now. That have really broken down that bridge that we used to have called trust. Uh, it, it's, it's very tarnished right now between, between the home and, and the school. And so I think when you say support, absolutely, that's always been research one oh one. Support your teachers, support your teachers, support your teachers. Doing it right now in the face of, of, uh, a, a, a lot of criticism. Is hard. So I think what we have to do, when you say, I'm worried about King George County. That's, when I took this job, I thought to myself, there's no way that we're gonna address, address all these woes that exist in public education. Um, but what we can do, I think in our county, is make sure that we establish trust. And you do that, I think, by opening lines of communication and making sure that we, that it's very much like a family, you know, like, you know, everyone's in this together for King George County schools. I think we've already got some groundwork laid there. I, I think, you know, this school division, uh, especially compared to maybe our surrounding school divisions, has, has a much, um. Better reputation for, for, for being, you know, establishing that good relationship between families and school. Um, but it's hard.
Say something, um.
It's hard.
Please forgive me again, having been to eight different schools in my career, administrator at four of them. I think there's a couple of things, and I look at the schools, what, in what schools that I was administrator, which ones had great morale? And there were definitely some with fantastic morale. A couple of them, I've been in four of those, three of those were public schools, but there was great morale and, and here was a kind, even though some of them were private, some of them were Christian, some of them were public. The, the commonality where I saw great morale is, one, is teachers had a voice in decision-making. Now, that's a, that's this big, but that's pretty important. Teachers had a voice in decision-making. And, and I'm not saying I always did everything right, cause I learned, but that's just one, there's, there's a couple of other ones here. But in that, you know, it could be done sometimes in, you know, this is an individual school thing. You know, we can kind of do a policy or get permission at a superintendent level, but it actually does end up in the administrator of those individual schools. Of how can we give more teachers voices in the decisions about what they're doing in the classroom, what they're doing with curriculum and what they're doing in the school? Um, and you can do that by having, you know, one of the ways that I did it is I had a morning meeting, um, with my department chairs every single morning. And hearing from them, having input from them. And another piece of that, though, was pretty important. Is, um, allowing teachers the responsibility and trust to control what goes on in the classroom, even as far as curriculum is concerned. Cause they've got this big burden of they're worried about all the testing and all this kind of stuff. And it's like, Dr. Boyd and I have talked, this is a little bit of a risk when I'm about to say, and I'm not saying we should do it. So anybody who's gonna hear this publicly, please, this is a work session, so we're not making any decisions. Is that even if they did not follow all of the, and I'm, again, I'm not saying we should do this, okay? But even if they didn't follow all of the directors from the state, the SBA, the SOLs, as long as we see their students in their classroom succeeding. And doing well, even if they didn't follow any of the stuff that the state is dictating, that's what we want. Giving the teachers the freedom to be able to do that. Now, that's a gigantic risk. And now in Texas, if they didn't score well enough, that the teacher could lose their job and I, as a principal, would lose mine. But I'm saying that again, giving teachers a voice in decision-making. And allowing that collaboration for the teachers to be able to have the freedom to do what they feel is best in their classroom.
If you give them, if you give them a voice and what goes on, they're gonna feel like, they're, they're gonna feel ownership in it.
Yeah.
That's right.
So therefore, it's gonna be so much better.
I agree totally.
These are just my ideas.
I, I think what we have, what you all have control of, you have a few levers that, that, you know, I heard collaboration, having a voice. You know, a, a lot of these things take a resource that we don't have an infinite amount of, is time. Uh, we can sit here when everything is calm and relaxed and start talking about how to devise this most beautiful system. Uh, and then you get over there into a school day and it's like, you're running and you're just trying to get there and you're trying to get done, uh, with what you need to get done. So I can say, like, as far as what you've got control over, you know, you can get creative with the school calendar to provide opportunities for collaboration. You can get creative, uh. Different things where you're setting up those kind of department meetings and you're setting up those kind of professional development opportunities. And, and you're really providing time for those things to occur, which in Fairfax County, when I, when I was a teacher there. Every Monday, they let school out at one o'clock. Because from one o'clock to three o'clock every day, it was, those things happened once a week. So, you know, if, if you had to sit down with your department chairs, if you had to sit down with, have a faculty meeting, if you had to find time to establish buy-in, you built it in.
Well, we are over on our hours that we need, so why can't we do that? Why can't we take one day a week?
Eighteen days we have free.
Why can't we take one day a week and let them out a couple hours early?
Hours early.
That we can do this. And I'm not talking about professional development.
No.
Because professional, they would rather spend more time in their classroom.
Yeah.
Than they would professional development. It's, it's almost six.
Yeah.
It's almost six thirty.
To get into.
But. One thing I have found in the last three months is that teachers love to see school board members in schools.
Yep.
They love to see us there. You've been with me, you've been with me, and they all praise that we are there.
Even I ran into that last year too.
They want us to be in the schools.
I've seen it every time I've been there.
And that's where, that's how we can support the teachers.
There's something else.
By being in the schools.
I have to say something about professional development. One, and we've talked a little bit about this too, is I think that there can be some of this improving teacher morale through professional development. Two things, one of them, give them choices as to, rather than just simply doing professional development in the days that we've identified them. Let them fin, do that required professional development, even if they do it in the summertime and they can take the days that are here and have them take off. That was one.
No.
Second thing is, is to actually see as many, what of our own staff here can do professional development? When we have our, say you have a teacher at an elementary school, and I know you've probably done a little bit of this. Teacher at an elementary school or someone who's really good at doing something, have them do the professional development. That way, everybody says, wow, this is somebody from I know, and they're doing that, then, oh, I got a great idea and then I could do it too.
They're in the same boat.
What's in this left, could I, uh, just say something?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Roll.
Train the train.
So I think, Ed, Mr. Frank, I think you and I are the ones that, uh, voted for the morale, so that's, that's why it got on here for the agenda. So the main thing I had in mind with it, I mean, obviously a lot of good points being up there, but I was wondering to Dr. Boyd's point about, um. It's just like one can't, uh, straw for another on the camel. I just wanted, I think it'd be good to have, I know we didn't know a lot of the things that are wrong, but. I'd love to see a survey just saying, hey, what are, like, the top, you know, five or so things that just make your day harder unnecessarily? Like low hanging fruit, the things that we can try and take away, take off the back. And, um, so I'd like to see that, something actionable for us that we can do as a school board.
Interesting.
All right, it is six.
It's, I think it's.
Any last comment, right? Any last comment that anybody wants? What were you saying, I'm sorry?
I was just, when you were talking, I talked over you because you said the two hours every Monday and I said four day work week.
Yeah, I know. There's just a lot to that, I mean.
All the tests they got it.
That's the problem.
It's ridiculous.
I mean. It's packed so much stuff, you know, as far as the curriculum and the, that nation, it's a little deeper than. You know, we're not accredited and we're here talking about something different. And usually.
Are there any schools in Virginia that do the four day work week?
Not unless it's year-round schools.
Yeah, not that I know of.
I mean, Colorado, the, where I, where I came from in West Coast, Colorado, they had a four day school week.
Yeah, there's a couple I've seen, yeah.
It took two or three years to work out all of them.
I would invite a year-round thing where. I'm off the record. You know, a year-round school that, uh. This, this agr, you know, agricultural school calendar that we still use, we're off June, July and part of August. That's, that summer learning loss for kids is real.
And you know what? Most of the world, most of the world.
Yeah.
All of Asia.
I think, I think when you're talking about morale.
Oh, I.
Do, do nine weeks, do a nine week quarter.
And then I threw you a thought.
Would be nine week order, three week solace, that, that's the rest of the world. You can really do that, you're gonna open up, open up unbelievably. Because during, and basically for the vacation program, it's April, August possession. Those are the three months off the rest of the world has. It's only America and Canada, but we, we do this three months in summer, nobody else.
Oh.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
All in favor?
All right.
I. Aye.
All right.